All right, good evening and welcome to the Heartland Township Planning Commission Meeting of January 29th, 2015. We would like to begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its cause.
Thank you. Commissioner Newsom, will you please take bow?
Sure. Commissioner Murphy?
Here.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Here.
Commissioner Grissom?
Here.
Trustee Kalani?
Here.
Chair President Fox?
Here.
Vice Chair Newsom is here. Secretary Terry Boyd is absent. We also have Planning Director Dave Campbell.
All right, thank you very much. Item 4, Approval of Our Meeting Agenda. So moved?
Support.
We have a motion to approve from Commissioner Kalani, a second from Commissioner Mitchell. Are there any changes? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Prose nay, motion carries. Next up, Item 5A, Approval of Our Meeting Minutes from December 18th.
I make a motion to approve our meeting minutes for December 18th, 2014.
Support.
We have a motion from Commissioner Grissom, second from Commissioner Murphy. Are there any changes? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Prose nay, motion carries. Next up, Item 6 is Call to the Public. At this point, anybody in the audience that wishes to address the Planning Commission can do so. If you are here for Item 7A, which is the public hearing for KFC, save your questions until that time because we'll take those during that particular agenda item. So if there's anyone that would like to speak on anything but KFC, please step forward now.
Can I ask you about KFC?
Sure. Come on up if we could get your name and your address, please.
My name is, is this one working?
Sure is.
My name is Stan Cisco. I live at 1225 Maxfield Road. I just moved here in the last couple of weeks. And beautiful area. And curious about what's going on here with the new subdivision going in. And I'm concerned about the traffic that's going to generate in the center of the road where it comes out. It's going to be right where my driveway is and people are going to be shining their lights right in my windows.
Good.
The other thing is reading the agenda here, or the proposal, that there's a possibility that they might widen the road. If they do widen the road, my driveway is an entire easement. You know, it must have been grandfathered in or whatever. But that is a concern for me. If they do decide to widen the road, I'm not going to have any driveway. So these are things that concern me, the traffic, the widening of the road. And I hope the commission and everybody looks at that really strongly.
And we will. Thank you. And when we get to that item, hopefully those particular items can be discussed at that time.
Okay.
We'll make sure that they're covered for you.
Okay.
All right, thank you. So anybody, I know we had some late arrivals, anybody that wishes to speak tonight to the Planning Commission on anything but Item 7A, which is the KFC, now would be the time to step forward. Any KFC comments will come during that particular agenda item. Anyone else?
I'm Sherri Polash.
Sherri, how would you say?
P-O-L.
P-O-L.
L-E-S-C-H. And I reside at 1266 Maxwell.
Okay.
Which, our property is on the east boundary of the proposed Woods Edge. And I'm just kind of curious about, you know, there's a lot of wetlands in there and there's a lot of wetlands that actually straddle that property with our property and then actually drain into my other neighbor's property. And you know as well as I do that when you displace water, it has to go somewhere.
Okay.
So I want to pay particular attention to what the drainage proposals are. In fact, one lot, I think it's Lot 3. Yeah, if you look at the aerial photo, Lot 3 actually is probably half pond, which abuts, you know, that pond kind of straddles our property and Lot 3. And then of even concern in, looks to me like might be Lot 4 into 5. It's hard to see here because of the foliage. That's actually the, the pond that's on Lot 3 is actually pretty well self-contained. But there is ponding, looks like maybe a corner of 4 and 5. And then that, looks like that's going to be an open space that kind of wedges behind Lot 5. That pond actually, that pond system actually goes from the proposed Woods Edge through our property over into a pond that drains on my neighbor's property. And, you know, when it's full, it's quite large and it's, I don't want it to get larger as a result of this development because it already, you know, fills up quite a bit with water. I'm also interested, there was, I think when maybe it was the prior owner first came to the Planning Commission for a plan for this property, I think it was during then that it was disclosed that this is a habitat for the Indiana bat, which is an endangered species. And I wondered if there was any addressing that in this plan in terms of, you know, removing trees. I know when we applied for a variance for my husband's shop, that we had to address tree removal and the Indiana bat was not necessarily an issue there because we didn't want to remove trees. So our proposal actually protected the habitat. But I'm just kind of curious as to that's been addressed in any of these plans. And I'd also be concerned about lighting. You know, it's, it's nice not to have a whole bunch of lights on in our property in the evening. And so I'd be interested in knowing what the proposal is and the light candles, foot candles for street lighting there.
Okay. We will get those answered for you when we get to Item 8B. Anyone else? Anything but KFC? If we could get your name and address, please.
Yes, I'm Chris Peterson. I'm a property owner down the way on Lone Tree Road.
Yep.
Just east, southeast of the proposed development of the Woods Edge. That Lone Tree Road, though it's deemed a private road by the Road Commission, my neighbor had had an easement, Robert Selfsich, for that stretch of road down to his property, which is just east of my property. And my concern is just that that easement stays in place and that we can continue to use that road to access our properties.
Okay, very good. We'll get that answered. Anyone else? If you get your name and address, please.
My name is Lee Stouse.
Could you spell the last name?
S-T-O-U-S-E.
Okay, thank you.
And I live at 656 Maxwell Road. And I also have 80 acres off of Lone Pine, the abandoned road.
Okay. Excuse me, Lone Pine or Lone Tree?
I'm sorry, Lone Tree. I'm sorry. I have a five acre parcel back there that has perked, the county designated, that could be built on. And I understand maybe another house is going in back there in the next year or two. How's this easement on developers' property going to look if people start, or they improve that road or finish that road? I mean, is there any thought of that or anybody said anything?
We can ask the applicant that when we get to Item 8B in your regards to improving Lone Tree.
I would think it eventually will be improved.
Okay.
That's a, that's a decertified county road.
Right.
So it would...
Falls on the property owners in that location.
Okay, so there's a, there's an easement across that?
It's a, it's a, it's a public access, decertified county road.
Okay. What are you going to tell a homeowner who wants to build back there?
They have to follow the process for improving the road in order to get access.
I realize that, but how is a developer, after it's approved, going to react to people wanting to improve that road, build off their own properties back there? I mean, is that easement for everybody that...
I guess we'd have to take a look at it. Rather than get into Item 8B right now, we'll get the comments addressed with easements and access and improvements and home building when we get the actual developer proposing this project up at the table here.
Right. What that, are you talking about Lone Tree? Lone Tree was a county road. It's been decertified and what that means, all that really means is, they don't use any public funding at all to improve that road. That's an issue for the Road Commission, not necessarily Heartland Township in terms of that because we have no control over that road.
Okay, but if you approve this project without answering some of those questions and you basically, you know, people want to build a house back there and they can't, can't get in because of the road, you can't improve the road, it would be a private road at that point.
And I, and I think we can get into those conversations a little bit more when we get in later into the meeting. Because what we're trying to do is gather the information that you guys have for that particular applicant and we'll use that in part of our discussion with them.
But you're aware of the easement that goes back to, all the way back where you can drive? There's an easement. Does that easement apply to everybody that owns property back there?
We'll ask. We'll find out.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Yes, my name is Bill Poland and I have property off of Maxfield Road.
What's your address?
1270.
1270 Maxfield?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yes. I was concerned about Maxfield Road in general, parts of the road at times are not very well maintained. And with a lot more traffic and a lot more construction and stuff going on, just concerns about the road in general. It's paved partially and unpaved and it gets pretty, pretty rough at times.
Okay. Very good, thank you. Anyone else on any item but KFC? We're going to get to the KFC here in a minute. We did take notes on all those and we'll be having some conversation on all those points with the developer proposal here shortly.
Larry, I have one question. Is it Chris? I think it's your, what was your last name?
Chris Peterson. P-E-T-E-R-S-E-N.
Yeah, and what was your address on Lone Tree Road?
00.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, we'll, we'll close our call to the public and we'll now move to Item 7A, which is a public hearing. And the public hearing, the order of which we handle a public hearing at the Planning Commission is we'll open the public hearing up, we'll turn the meeting over to our Planning Director for his review of the proposal. We'll have the applicant, anything they'd like to add, any comments they would like to make. We'll ask them to go sit back in their seats and we'll invite the public up for any questions or comments they'd like to make in regards to the KFC. At that time, there isn't going to be any exchange. Again, we'll take the notes down and we'll get that all taken care of for you. We'll close the public hearing and then we'll invite the applicant back up to the table, the Planning Director, the applicant and the Planning Commission will talk about it. We'll make sure we get any comments you may have included in the conversation. So with that being said, I'd like to open the public hearing at 7:15 for the applicant Lucky Dining, Inc., Glenn Frueling, tax ID number 4708-2230026. The applicant is requesting a special use approval to construct a drive-through facility in conjunction with a new Kentucky Fried Chicken restaurant. And just for the record, all the public notice requirements for this public hearing have been met. So with that, what I'd like to do is turn it over to our Planning Director, David Campbell, and allow him to introduce the project.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening to the Planning Commission, to everybody in attendance. It's good to see such good turnout at our Planning Commission meeting. It's good to know that our public wants to be involved. The first item on the Planning Commission's agenda this evening with respect to new development is the proposed KFC with the drive-through. And the drive-through component is key on this, particularly because in the general commercial zoning district, which is where this project is proposed, a drive-through is considered a special land use. And per the zoning ordinance, a special land use goes through a more intense review procedure. It has to come before the Planning Commission. There must be a public hearing. We must send the public hearing notices out to all the real property owners within 300 feet. We put a notice in the newspaper. And the Planning Commission for the special land use side of things would be making a recommendation for the use to the Township Board because per the zoning ordinance, only the Township Board can approve a special land use. Now, the second component to this is the site plan. Perhaps the best way to explain this would be if the KFC did not have a drive-through and was just a standalone restaurant, the site plan and the approval, the authority to approve that site plan would rest with the Planning Commission per the procedures of our zoning ordinance. So the site plan side of things rests with the Planning Commission. The special land use authority approval rests with the Township Board. So procedurally, what could happen if the Planning Commission so chooses is the Planning Commission could choose to advance this proposal to the Township Board so that the Township Board could consider the special land use side of things. But if the Planning Commission so chooses, the site plan half of the process could come back to them if they find that there's a number of items that need to be addressed. And as we note in our review letter dated January 21st, the staff finds that there are enough items that need to be addressed that we feel this plan, the site plan side of things should be revised and resubmitted and come back to this Planning Commission. And on a concurrent track, the special land use side of things could advance to the Township Board for the Board to consider the drive-through special land use side of things. I hope that made some sort of sense. The, so when you have a special land use, and in this case a drive-through special land use, there's certain criteria that have to be met. And those are criteria, as I mentioned, are ultimately up to the Township Board, but the Planning Commission would need to make a recommendation on them. The Planning Commission would have to make a finding that the criteria for a special land use that would apply to any special land use are met. And those are the criteria that we speak to on page 2 of our letter, A through F, things such as be harmonious and in accordance with the objectives, intent and purpose of this ordinance. There's five criteria that speak to, excuse me, six criteria that speak to those types of objectives. And then there's specific criteria for the special land use that the applicant has to show that they're in compliance with. And those are the components that the Planning Commission would have to consider if they so choose to make a recommendation this evening to advance the special land use to the Township Board. The recommendation of staff is that the special land use could advance to the Township Board. We feel that they've, they've met the intent and for the most part, met the criteria of the special land use. There's a couple of things that could be addressed when it comes back for the site plan approval. But procedurally, we feel this could advance to the Board for the Board to consider the special land use. As far as the site plan, our letter does go into a good bit of detail about all the various criteria that the Planning Commission would look at in considering the site plan approval, the building materials and the building design, the lighting, the landscaping, the parking lot layout, layout, so on and so on. And our letter does get into a good deal of detail about those items. And we find that there's enough of those items that still need to be revised that we do feel the site plan should come back to the Planning Commission one or more times. The, I could see where the Planning Commission may not want to, want to get too involved in a lot of those, those kind of nitty gritty site plan issues this evening. But I would want the Planning Commission to give the applicant some feedback, at least with respect to the building design and the building materials. Because my understanding, and maybe the applicant can speak to this better, if the building design and materials are not something that the Planning Commission is inclined to accept, the applicant would likely have to go back to the corporate folks for KFC and explain to them that the, this prototype is not something that's, that's going to be acceptable in Heartland Township and would then have to get that corporate approval to amend the building materials and the colors and whatever else to meet the local standards of Heartland Township. So I do think it's worthwhile for the applicant to hear some of those comments, most particularly as they relate to the building material. Once we have an opportunity for the public to speak on this, I'd be more than happy to go through my review letter in any level of detail that the Planning Commission wants to get into and answer any questions. But if you don't have any questions right now, it might be a good time to turn it over to the applicant and have them give their overview of the project.
Okay. That's what we'd like to do. If you'd like to come forward and give us your name and who you're representing.
My name's Bill Beckett. I'm with WT Development, 10223 East Cherry Bend, Traverse City, Michigan. And here with me tonight is Glenn Frueling. He is the franchisee and the owner of this project, resident in Heartland Township and has some other stores in his surrounding communities. So he's anxious and excited about the prospect for bringing a store to the community.
Bill, I think if we could, since it's the, it's the public hearing on the drive-through, let's concentrate on your presentation on predominantly the drive-through and those types of issues and avoid some of the architecture and landscaping issues in the site plan review. Since the public hearing is about the drive-through itself.
Could we have the site plan put up?
A particular page?
I think the aerial's a pretty good...
The aerial?
Sure.
Okay.
This site is located on the north side of M-59 and east of Clark. And his own general commercial, access to the site will be off of M-59, which is a state highway. And we're working with MDOT on the, on the design for the access. One thing that MDOT is requiring here is, is an extension of a turn lane from the eastern driveway at the strip center all the way to the inbound lane of our driveway. And then as you exit, exit our driveway, we'll have an acceleration, a short acceleration lane roughly to the west edge of the property. The, the site's been designed to utilize a pretty small percentage of the, of the overall parcel. We have 347 feet of road frontage, 200 feet is required. And we have 388 feet, I think it is, of depth. Or, I'm...
No, we got a lot more than that.
Yeah, I'm sorry. The, we have substantial depth. Actually, what we're not developing back there, from the back of the building to the residential property line at the rear is actually in excess of 300 feet. So nearly, nearly a football field between the building and the rear property line. And of course, you can see from the aerial, there's substantial vegetation, natural vegetation and spring. With regards to the drive-through special use criteria, site plan, I'm sorry? Could you adjust the site plan a little bit? We have a main drive aisle. The drive-through lane enters at the back. That's, that's the whitish lane you see circling, a typical fast food type layout. Parking lot is on either side of the drive aisle. The building is shaded in a beige tan color. And the drive-through lane at this time is designed with 10 staffing spaces, but they are at 20 feet and your ordinance does require 22. So given the nature of the business and talking with, with Mr. Frueling, we'd probably seek a waiver or variance with regards to the length of the drive-through lane. Typically, on a busy night, KFC's not like an McDonald's. Seven or eight cars in the drive-through stack would be a really nice night to have at a KFC restaurant. So one size doesn't really fit all when it comes to designing drive-throughs for restaurants. Parking wise, there's 38 parking spaces. And we have truck and loading zone, boat, trailer, truck RV type parking, parallel to and, and north of the drive-through lane. And then there's also parallel parking along the west property line. The speaker post is, is just, just behind the building and just north of the sidewalk there. So the speakers these days are designed much different than they used to be in the old days. In the old days, you had, when they first introduced the drive-throughs, there wasn't a lot of volume control on the, on the speakers. These days, they're designed to increase or decrease volume based on ambient noise in the background. So the idea, you'd have about four feet between the speaker and the car and you're supposed to be able to have a normal conversation, normal volume conversation in the sound decibels.
Mr. Bennett, I'm sorry, the speaker location is there? Is that the ordering?
Yes, that's the ordering station.
Okay, thank you.
So that does face to the west. The order board is in front and that kind of faces north and west. We really don't have trouble anymore unless we're in a real highly dense, densely populated area and close proximity to residents with regards to the drive-through operation anymore. In terms of, of the specific criteria here, A through, A through F, the, the site is own commercial, it's, it meets the, it's an allowable use within your zoning ordinance. And certainly we can develop this in compliance with, with those standards. With regards to compatibility to the natural environment, we're developing such a small portion of the overall site that a pretty significant portion is, is going to remain undisturbed. There are some wetlands at the southeast corner. We do have a detention pond that we'll be building to the north of those wetlands. And we'll be enhancing, enhancing the site development with landscape around the building and perimeter parking areas as well as the pond. In terms of your comprehensive plan, again, this, it's, your comprehensive plan shows commercial development through this area and this is an allowable use within, within that district. As to all your services, obviously, you know, we're serviced by highway. We have good access. We're making improvements for safety, turning movement safety. Utilities are all available at the site, including stormwater, which will remain, remain on the parcel and be detained in a pond. I think probably E is maybe a little more interest, interest to you. With regards to our development, we, you know, we don't want to develop more than we need to to operate this business. We're developing a small portion at the south end of the site and, and the west end of the site. So on the drive-through side of the site, that will abut future commercial development. And, and we will have quite a substantial buffer to the residence, residential zoning north of the, north of the restaurant.
Don't upset the homeowners.
In terms of building codes, health department codes, life safety issues, this will be a state-of-the-art building. If you meet your township engineering standards, MDOT design standards, building codes, health codes, life and safety is paramount. And there's really no nuisance associated with, with this business. And there's really no nuisance associated with this business. It's restaurant use, drive-through convenience, and a brand that's not in the township. In terms of public cost of improvements for this, there are none. It's private development, and Glenn's going to open up his wallet and pay for this thing. So I think in overall, significant improvement for the township, nice addition of another food choice and within the regulations and requirements and so forth. In terms of some of your design standards here, 1 through 4, minimum road frontage, 200 feet. We have 347 feet. The driveway I did talk about, we'll have the single commercial drive on at 59. We've made provisions for cross-access with the parcel to the west. It's a little tricky right now in that we don't know how that parcel will develop. So we may revisit having two connection points there, and perhaps it might make more sense to have one at the front. Not sure what, if anything, has been researched on that project for any developments to the west.
Nothing as of yet.
Sound control, again, we've talked about drive-through communication system. These things are automatically adjusted. Their normal conversation volume at about four feet, which is the distance from the speaker close to the car, and they drop off very quickly after that. So probably would not be very observable or very audible at 58 feet away at the property line to the west. And certainly, you wouldn't hear that 300-some feet to the north.
It's over a football field from the restaurant to those houses. We didn't want to disturb any of those houses, so that's well over a football field lane.
And then we talked about the stacking spaces as well. We will be requesting a variance. Right now, we do have 10 cars, but per your ordinance, they are required 22 feet, and ours are designed at 20. We will be making adjustments. I think that's it with regards to special land.
Okay. Before you leave, let's just find out, does anybody here want to make a comment on the KFC proposal? Because I think most of you are here for something else. Okay, so there's no need to leave. So what we'll do is close the public hearing at 7:34. What I'd like to do now is open it up to questions, comments from the Planning Commission, Planning Director, and the applicant, anything you'd like to discuss in terms of the special use request for the drive-through restaurant.
I have a question. It pertains to the setbacks. So in your package, it would be on 7AA, or in 7A, it would be on page 10.
In the review?
Uh, yes, I think so.
Go get the package, please, 10.
Are we in the site plan stuff at that point?
You know, maybe I'm beyond it.
Yeah, you are.
Okay, all right. Not to be talked about now, then?
No.
Okay.
Please. Just stick to page 6, 7, and 8, and the site plan. There aren't a lot of questions, because I think they met most of the criteria.
They did. The one, well, two in particular. I think we would, within the site plan, there may be an opportunity to have more discussion of, when the special land use criteria speaks to control of sound level, I hear everything Mr. Beckett's saying about the new technology is much more efficient in controlling that sound, and that sound's going to be directed to the west. Should the board so choose, there could be an opportunity to enhance the area between the proposed use and the neighborhood in the back. If it is, if it can be determined that sound may be an issue, there may be an opportunity for additional landscape buffering or some sort of a screen wall, some other reasonable methods to ensure that none of that drive-through sound, and idling cars for that matter, is finding its way into the backyards of the residence to the north.
And I would say that I would agree with that. I'm probably going to come at it from the requirement of buffering between residential and commercial.
Yes.
And whether they had a drive-through restaurant or not, I'll probably come at, when we get into site plan, looking at some type of screening between those two uses, which is a requirement of the ordinance.
It is.
And did you have a second one? Did you say two items, or no?
If I did, I may have lost what that second one was. I'm sure it'll come back to me. Well, I guess, related to sound, is lighting. And again, maybe my answer's the same. There are opportunities with site plan review to ensure that both the site lighting, the parking lot lighting, and also the headlights of the vehicle circulating around the site, there's opportunities to ensure that that light is not encroaching on anyone's backyard.
High observation. Fast-food restaurant's going to have a drive-through.
Yes.
They have positioned the speaker away from the residential that's west, not north. They have the stacking spaces that are not interfering with the general client parking, which is traditionally a problem. But in this particular application, I don't see it, because stacking starts at the back, and if anything, it's maybe those last two spots. Quite often, we've seen stacking spaces interfere with the parking where customers can't back out of spaces if the stacking is interfering with it. In this particular application, I don't see that.
Yeah, this is wider than all the restaurants here. We wouldn't measure, so.
Right. I don't know how to respond to the 20 versus the 22, because quite frankly, I don't know how we got 22.
It's a big car.
20 is an issue.
That's a big car.
Well, but Hartland's a semi-royal community with a lot of pickup trucks.
I have a pickup truck.
But I would have to say, I don't know how we got to 22. And is 20 significantly different or not?
I don't think there's a reason to make it too significant. I mean, it is a dimensional issue that needs to be worked out. I'd like to think that there's some area in through here where there's an opportunity to extend the drive-through lane out a little bit more, and pick up a few feet that way. The intent is to ensure that the stacking is not blocking the surface parking, as you mentioned, Chair Fox. I also recognize what the applicant's probably going to say, which is, if we ever have 10 cars in our drive-through, either we're having a really good day, or we're having a really, we're not cooking our chicken fast enough. So I think we can work through the dimensional shortcoming as far as the length of the individual stacking spaces.
Well, and if we can't work through the dimension, I know that we've had drive-through situations where the applicant has provided documentation from corporate that says our maximum stacking requirements at peak are X.
But last time, I got variance. That's exactly what happened.
Right.
Got a variance, and we only had eight spaces, and it was proof.
Well, and I guess what I'm saying is, I believe there are ways to work through that.
Yes.
You can't work through the dimensional of the 22 feet. There may be an opportunity, if KFC has documentation and will provide it.
Just go down nine spaces at 22.
Yeah, but it's got to come from corporate, not from you, that, yeah, it could be nine.
Absolutely.
So I believe that we can get through that particular element.
Believe so, too.
Is that something the Planning Commission has the ability to waive or set a variance?
We have, and the recommendations in the past. Now, we're approving the site plan, so I would assume yes.
The Planning Commission does have the authority to consider the dimensions of parking layout.
Okay. Are there any other comments, thoughts, things you'd like to see them do in regards to the drive-through?
Mr. Flou, from an operational standpoint, you obviously own several KFC franchises. What is a busy moment in a drive-through in Livingston County, Michigan?
My busiest store is Howell, and when they're rolling, you know, seven, eight cars in drive-through, that's Super Bowl Sunday. So, you know, KFC, the ticket average is higher. For what Taco Bell does in a day, they might have 800 customers, and I might only do 300, but we do the same volume. So, you know, the transaction is much cheaper at McDonald's, at Taco Bell, it's more expensive at KFC, people are going to get a family meal. So we service a lot less people.
Do you know what the breakdown is between walk-in versus drive-through for KFC as opposed to, say, a Taco Bell?
Against them? No, I'm not sure. I know KFC is 57%.
57% drive-through?
57% is all drive-through.
Okay.
Without a drive-through, you don't open a KFC.
And while you don't have the number, I would guess it's fair to assume that a Taco Bell or McDonald's is a much higher percentage drive-through? Is that?
I would assume it's much higher, yeah.
I think it can work.
Yes.
Personal opinion. I think you can work with it. I think we can figure out the 10 spaces, the 22 feet. I just don't think that's a hang-up.
Staff's recommendation is that the special land use component of this proposal can advance to the board.
Right.
So that the board can make a decision on a special land use permit. Staff does feel that there's site plan issues that need some more attention from the Planning Commission after the applicant has had a chance to hear what you have to say and address some of the issues in our letter.
Still within the special use part, but I think, again, it falls to the site plan piece. On page 8, we talk about these access, cross-easement access points, possibility 1 versus 2. My question is to Dave, as this project moves forward, are we going to want something in writing that they are going to agree to those access points being used by the neighbor? And the reason I ask is that we had one here, right on M-59, that was put in. And it was put in, but when the business built next door, they said, "Well, but you can't use it." So they put a chain across it. We couldn't do anything about it. So do we have a way of making them state that it will be open?
You do. It would be an excellent idea to, as a condition of site plan approval, the applicant would grant a access easement across both of those driveway stubs for future development to the west. And I would like to think that, since the applicant is proposing those stubs anyway, he would be agreeable to that. I mean, the idea is eventually beneficial to the applicant in the sense that, assuming this property develops, this property next door to the west, and then the next property west of that, which is then the corner of Clark and 59. If we have interconnectivity between those three sites with whatever develops on them, the site on the corner is going to have access out onto Clark. And as long as they're all interconnected, then in theory, the customer base from Township Hall and everywhere north of us could come and go to any of those sites via Clark Road, which would be beneficial to Mr. Flou's business. If his customers to the north can get into and out of his site from Clark Road without having to go out on M-59 and do the Michigan lefts and all that, that's beneficial to his business. So I'd like to think that Mr. Flou would be more than willing to grant those access easements as a condition of his approval. Now, I don't want to speak for him, though, so.
Well, we put those on there because we had the understanding that somebody was going to develop to the west of us. If that's not the case, we could take them off or leave them there, or manipulate them a little bit. My understanding is, to the west of my property, to the northwest, there's some wetlands on that property, so that stub may not work, and I don't know, because I don't own that property between me and Clark Road, so maybe that drive would never work. I don't know that. So we just need to know if we should even stub that in or not, or if you guys aren't going to make that person do that, or if that person doesn't exist, I guess, it doesn't really matter.
Yeah, and I think where I'm coming from, I think where probably most of the Planning Commission will come from is, if a stub, we like interconnectivity of parking lots.
Oh, yeah.
For exactly the reason the planner suggested.
Yeah.
If the decision is that that is a good place to put one, then what we want to do is make sure that in the final approvals, there's something in writing that you're going to allow them to connect and to use it.
Right.
Because we have one here that didn't work out that way.
They don't want to do it, you know.
Right. But we will make them connect to yours, and you two will agree that your customers can cross. And we think that's a good thing, but somebody didn't believe it was a good thing, and it didn't work. So it's now been fixed, yeah.
And they're business owners.
Correct. So we don't want, we learn from our mistakes. Any other questions? If you're so inclined, in the Planning Director, Planning Department's letter, on page 16, you'll find the recommendation.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Would it be appropriate to get some feedback from the Commission with?
After the planning, after the, we'll get this done, and then we'll just touch on that for you. We're not going to do the review of the site plan.
No, no.
Per their recommendation, but I think you should get some feedback.
That'd be great. Thank you.
So we're ready for a motion, if you're so inclined.
Okay, let's make motion. I move to approve, to recommend approval of the special land use for the KFC fast-food drive-through restaurant, application number 527, located on M-59, east of Clark Road, to the Hartland Township Board, conditioned on the following: Planning Commission approval of the revised and resubmitted site plan element of application number 527 for a KFC fast-food drive-through restaurant.
Do we want to add, then, a statement that the applicant will provide, the Planning Commission, a later stating, cross-access between businesses?
You want it here, Dave, or are you going to pick it up in the site plan?
I think you can pick that up at site plan.
Very good. Support.
You'll support that? Okay, we have a motion to recommend approval of the special land use, request from Commissioner Grissom, second from Commissioner Mitchell. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those may. Motion passes. Congratulations. Now, we're not going to do your site plan review on staff's recommendation, but I do think, as staff recommends, maybe you should get some feedback.
That would be great.
On that particular building that you are proposing. If you have not read the staff's letter, have you all read it?
Yes.
Okay. Comments?
Refresh my memory, what is this material in white here?
I may defer to the applicant. I want to say that in a phone conversation with Mr. Bennett, or perhaps Mr. Flou, it's a flat metal panel. I don't believe it's identified as such on the elevation renderings. I think it identifies the color, but not necessarily the material. But if I can defer to the applicant.
The base of the building, in the back of the building, is masonry brick, face brick. That's the dark area. Above the brick, the white area, are EFS panels. So I do know that that, with regards to your percentage criteria, we're working through that. That appears to be too high percentage. The red are metal panels, and that's a panel system. KFC shifts to the job site. The sign on there, that's probably an important discussion item as well, and the KFC... And the KFC letters and the Colonel's mugshot are as old as the brand. Go together, and I know you have some sign criteria that restricts the panel sign to 10 square feet, and that's... We're going to have a difficult time with KFC on that. So if you can provide us some guidance or some insight there, that would be helpful as well.
As far as the sign itself?
Sign itself, or the possibility for variance.
So the sign itself falls under administrative review and approval, and that would be me and my staff. The planning commission, per zoning ordinance change two years ago, no longer reviews and approves signs. That's administrative approval now.
All right.
That being said, I thought it was worthwhile to include in our letter that it's my job to enforce the standards that are in the zoning ordinance today, and the Colonel's way too big for what's allowed in the zoning ordinance today. And it's just worth you and your client being aware of that early and often. The issue where the planning commission would be involved is the building materials and, in particular, the red flag, as I've heard Mr. Fluehlering refer to it, multiple red flags. I think there's one on each of, yeah, three of the four sides of the building. The zoning ordinance speaks to a couple of things. One is an avoidance of dissonant colors, and it would be a planning commission determination of whether the corporate standard red applies as a dissonant color. The zoning ordinance also speaks to using architectural elements as the background of a sign. And so it would be a planning commission discussion of whether the red metal panels are an architectural element, or whether they really are more intended to form the background of a sign. Because if they are the background of a sign, then that red sign collectively is far too large for what our sign ordinance would allow. So while the sign itself, the KFC and the Colonel's mugshot, as you call it, are administratively reviewed and approved when the time comes, the question of whether that red is a dissonant color, and the question of whether that red is the background of a sign, is a planning commission determination as they review the building materials and architectural elements of the proposed building.
My opinion on that would be that it's an architectural element. It's very architectural in scale and proportion and fit with the other components of the building. But I do have a problem with the amount of EFS that is being shown. Typically, it falls under disrepair, it starts to stain, and doesn't get painted often enough, and just doesn't look well after a few years. So if there's something you can do to tone down that, the amount of the white there, it'd be good.
Be happy to address that.
When you say the white, the color itself or the material?
Material, yes.
Yes.
The amount of the material there.
I would support Commissioner Newsom's comment on the EFS. I know, Mr. Fluehlering, we've been round and round about the Colonel's mugshot last time you were here. It hasn't changed. So my comment would be, I don't... I wouldn't support, even though it's not our approval, I wouldn't support that element. But I will agree with the comments of Commissioner Newsom on the architectural materials.
You support the sign at all?
I think it needed to come off, or you need to bring them down to 10 square feet.
Oh, make it smaller.
We... And the reason I'm speaking this way is because we went through this like two years ago, if you recall.
Yeah.
And the township has been over and over the panel signs and the sizes and what's permitted and what's not. And 10 square feet is what's permitted. And so I would think that you're going to need to find a way to make them be 10 square feet. Okay? Just to comment that when you get to site plan, those three lights that under the KFC, we don't do up lighting, you can do down lighting. So you'll notice even on the Taco Bell, theirs are capped on the top and they wash down. So you'd have to watch for that, too. But color-wise, if you can get the bricks to work and all that type of a thing, the masonry products and meet the materials, I would agree with Commissioner Newsom on the color. Comments, question?
I agree.
For the benefit of the applicant, can I clarify? Or can I ask for clarification?
Please.
Is what I'm hearing, at least from Commissioner Newsom and Chair Fox, that the red flags... Let's dwell on the red part. Is there an opinion that it is not a dissonant color? Is that...
No, it's just, I think it is.
Is it an unacceptable dissonant color?
I believe if we look at what we've allowed every restaurant in town to do, whether it be the entry of the Big Boy, whether it be the french fry of the McDonald's, whether it be the element on the front of the Taco Bell, that they all are allowed some corporate identity, and they need to have some color, or they may become boring. But what we're not looking for are dissonant color buildings. There is a lot of red on that building compared to the others. I will agree with that. I think part of what's making the red look so red is all the white, and it's the contrast to the white. I think if you were to change that color scheme a little, I think you might find that red doesn't stand out as much. And I think you're seeing a lot of contrast there.
Very well. And the follow-up to that is, is the red panel material and that architectural element, is that the background of a sign, or is that an integral architectural element of this building?
Let me ask, what... Are they in formula for the amount of metal panel permitted on a building, or do we not know at this time?
The application did not include a percentage of the materials for each elevation of the building. That is something that will be required, so that we know when the time comes for them to formally ask for a waiver. What are they asking for a waiver for? Which percentage? Where are they over? Where are they under? The answer is, I don't know that, what the percentage of metal panels is on each of those elevations. My guess is that they are over, at least on the north, or excuse me, the south elevation, they're over, they exceed the 20% metal panel.
Okay. Yeah, it would look like that.
Yeah, and I think architecturally, if you work on the sign issue and bring in that whole, I like, you know, the look, it's nice-looking, but it's big. If you take the mugshot with the KFC and you shrink that down to an appropriate size, you'll probably want to follow with the red metal area there to make that more scalable to the sign. So that'll help improve the amount of material that we're, that they might be over there, so...
And you are going to have to watch how many signs are permitted, because we haven't brought that up.
It's mentioned in the letter.
Okay, I do not believe you're going to be permitted three signs on that building.
No.
So you're going to need to fall in line with the number of signs permitted. So I believe you get a 10-square-foot panel, and you'll get your 80 square feet?
It'll be two... It's... I need to double-check. It's two square feet per the width of the building.
Okay.
Up to a maximum of 80.
Taking the 80 back, but use the formula.
Yes.
You're going to need to comply to that.
Yeah.
Okay? But I believe the 10 is in addition to that. Is the 10 included?
Uh, no, it's the idea where you draw a whole rectangle around the whole thing, and every, all of that has to fit into that 80-square-foot rectangle.
I would suggest you work with the sign ordinance limitations. That is only fair for every business in town.
Sure.
But I do think we can work with you.
Great. And if I miss it, forgive me. The red background, whatever it turns into after they have a chance to take a closer look at it, is it not to be considered the background of the sign? When the time comes for me to measure the sign for the KFC, am I measuring the red metal panels behind it because they are the background of a sign?
I would say no.
Okay.
It's an architectural element of the building. Take the sign off, they would want that red architectural element there. So, and I don't think it's a dissonant color either. I think it's complementary to the brick, as they're showing you now. It's a little contrasting with the EFS, but if you could tone the amount of that down, I think it'd be even more complementary.
And I think you're probably right. Some of that scaling in there is because of what the sign is.
Right.
You may find the scaling is slightly different when you change that sign. So there may not be as much red.
Okay, great.
I would highly encourage you, when you get this together, to meet with staff before you just submit it.
Oh.
It'll be much faster. You don't have to worry about review time and coming and then going and then coming and going. Because I think they can probably help guide you, or we can, through our site plan committee who've guided you in a quicker turnaround.
That'd be great.
So that you can get this done.
We appreciate your comments.
Any other thoughts, Dave?
I don't think so. They've got a 12-page review letter from the planning department that some of the issues that have been brought up have been addressed adequately by the planning commission tonight. There's some other, I don't think overwhelming issues that they can fix. And hopefully, we'll see them back soon, and we're certainly going to see them back, I would assume, soon at the township board.
Yeah, and I'd like to say, on the other site plan issues, I did read the complete letter. I would pretty much agree. So if you're reading that and those that have read it, I pretty much follow the recommendations of staff, and I think this could be a smooth process.
Great, we'll do that.
Okay?
Yes, thank you.
All right, well, thank you for coming, and have a buck with the board. All right, now we are on to item 8A, which is Site Plan 524-C. This is a revised plan development, conceptual plan from Chestnut Development. If you'd like to come up, maybe what we'll do again is turn it over to David Campbell, our planner, for a quick overview, and then we'll let you have the floor.
So what I could have done a better job of with KFC is start off with where this project is proposed. I was so eager to get going on the procedure side of things that I forgot to let everybody know where they actually want to build it. This particular property is on the south side of M-59. Bear with me. Just east of Cullen Road, a vacant nine-acre parcel between the Autumn Woods Single Family Residential Development and the San Marino Single Family Residential Development. The applicant, Chestnut Development, Mr. Gronow, has been before this planning commission previously, July-ish? June? With a previous proposal for a plan development conceptual plan. Mr. Gronow had an opportunity to hear the planning commission's comments on that conceptual plan. He heard further comments from the township board in July. The applicant and his representatives have been back in several meetings and phone calls and emails and correspondents with staff, and have opted to revise their conceptual plan and resubmit it. So they're sort of back at the starting line on this procedurally. This is, the applicant is proposing a plan development, and so a plan development is a three-step process, which is each of those three steps going before the planning commission for recommendation, and then the township board for action. There's the conceptual plan stage, preliminary, and then final. The conceptual plan stage, which is where we are now, there's no formal action required or necessary. The intent with this process is for the applicant to receive as much feedback as possible from the planning commission and then from the township board on whether this is a feasible and optimal project that meets the standards and the intent of Heartland Township and of the plan development standards, which are typically held to an even higher level in our zoning ordinance. What the applicant is proposing is 25 detached condominium units. This is a little bit different than what was proposed in June. That was a site condominium. This is a detached condominium where the individual units are what most people think of as a traditional condo, where the owner owns the interior walls in, and everything exterior to that, including the grounds and the siding and the roofs and everything else, is considered a common element under common ownership of the condominium association. The site plan is showing 25 units on these nine acres, which comes out to a little bit less than three units per acre. And the conversation that's been had all the way through this process, going back to last spring, when the previous conceptual plan came before the planning commission and in meetings even before it got to the planning commission, was what is the appropriate density for residential development on this property? That was always the key conversation, and then right behind that, in terms of a key conversation, was the infrastructure improvements that would need to be necessary to make this a feasible project. Obviously, the applicant's proposing a single-access cul-de-sac to these 25 units. The comprehensive plan still designates this particular property as public, quasi-public, because at one time, this property was owned by the Detroit Presbyterian, and their intent was always to build a church here. They've obviously since sold it to Mr. Gronow's company. So it's difficult to say that this project is or is not consistent with comprehensive plan, given that the comprehensive plan designation on the property was for a specific use at a certain time. The planning commission is going through the process of updating the comprehensive plan currently, and this is one of the properties that the planning commission has taken a close look at with respect to what should its designation be, now that it's no longer given that a church is going to be built there. So I think that while the applicant, and he certainly had plenty of conversations with staff and with the planning commission and with our site plan committee, I think it would be beneficial for the planning commission to give as much feedback as they could to the applicant about the layout, the density, the overall feasibility of this project relative to good planning initiatives, so that those comments can be carried forward to the township board, so that this applicant has an honest perspective on the feasibility of this project. Like I said, no formal action is required this evening, but it's certainly in everyone's best interest that the applicant hear what the planning commission's perspective is on this project. Obviously, the applicant is here with his engineer, and unless the planning commission has some questions, I would recommend turning it over to them for their overview of the project.
I think we would agree. So if you could introduce yourself for everyone that's not familiar with you.
Yes, I will. Mr. Fox, Mr. Campbell, my name is David Leclerc with Livingston Engineering. Steve Gronow from Chestnut Development, the developer of the property, is here with me this evening to my left. I do have a couple exhibits that I would like to share with the planning commission. I don't know if it would be best if we use the overhead screen, or I've got an easel here, I'd be happy to put them up, whichever you think would be...
If we can use the overhead.
Best for you to see, I guess.
Let's see if the technology is cooperating with me this evening. So I already tried to get rid of that menu, and I don't know if the battery's on this remote. Oops. We may be looking at using the easel, Mr. Leclerc. Oops. Yeah, I think I need to get up on a ladder to get rid of all that.
Okay, all right. I can use an easel, or we may be able to see enough through there for what I'd like to share with you this evening.
Okay.
I guess we could try that, and if we have problems, we'll go to the easel.
All right.
As Mr. Campbell stated, we were last before the planning commission in June last summer with a project that was kind of similar but kind of different. And the reason that we're back here this evening is Mr. Gronow has done quite a bit of research on the market, what's available in the market, what's selling in the market, and he wishes to build a product that's different than the one we discussed last June. He can share some more of that information with you here shortly. We're hoping that this project can be a win-win for both the developer and the township. There was a lot of talk the last time about density, about some off-site cost, a lot of different moving targets, and we think we've got a project here this evening that can literally be a win-win for both the developer and the township. As Mr. Campbell had mentioned, the project is nine acres on the south side of M-59. It's a very unique parcel with regards to its location and its zoning slash master plan use. The location of the property on 59...
So, Leclerc?
Yeah.
Would we be better off looking at an aerial? Is it... What's...
You've got an aerial that covers about the same proximity.
Yes.
That'd be fine.
Okay. More? Oh, wait, you're not seeing what I'm seeing. I apologize.
No.
I'll just keep shining.
Little bit more.
All right. Uh... Now, you want more coverage than that?
A little bit more if you can. That's probably good. Yeah. The nine acres that we're talking about sits right here. To the west of the property, this is the San Marino subdivision. This is the Autumn Woods Development. And the reason this parcel is kind of unique is because it sits amongst a lot of different uses, a lot of different zonings, both up and down M-59 and on both sides of M-59. Less than a half mile away, this is the parcel where the new river church is going, that's going to be done here, I guess, in a couple months. About two-tenths of a mile away is a couple office buildings. This, I believe, is some duplexes and some multifamily zone properties. You know, again, less than a half mile away, we've got the assisted living facility. That's about three-tenths of a mile from our site. A little bit farther is the old high school, some ball fields. Across the road from that, we've got some more commercial office, and then we've got some other apartment units. So it literally sits on M-59, kind of amongst a lot of different uses. And I know there's been a lot of discussion about compatibility, about densities. We think that this property kind of fits in that on the piece and kind of goes with everything else that is along M-59. And the property is unique in its zoning because it is zoned PD, but it does have that public quasi-public master plan designation. And if you're not familiar with the public quasi-public, there's a lot of things that can be built there that fall under that: government offices, churches, post office, freshwater wastewater plants, libraries, parks, some things that we feel are a lot more intensive uses and that probably aren't nearly as compatible with the adjoining developments as this one would be. So what we're proposing is a 25-unit detached site condominium project, as Mr. Campbell had mentioned. The ownership of this is really from the walls-in. This project has about 32% open space, which is about the same as what the Autumn Woods Development has to the east. I don't know, David, if you can go to the site plan. The open space...
You want the, with the aerial or without?
With the aerial, I think it'd be fine. The 30% open space on this project is really all of this land behind these units. We've got some open areas behind, and we've got some areas up in here, which is nice for the neighboring developments because the open space, most of the open space does abut neighboring developments. We've also got a nice little area in this cul-de-sac which could be used for a nice little park area. There's room in this property, we can have a nice walking trail around here. That would be about four-tenths of a mile, which fits in real well with the demographics that Mr. Gronau is trying to hit with this product. So that works out good. One of the other things that we're proposing to do as part of this development, and there was a lot of conversation regarding this when we were to the Planning Commission last June, the township desires to have another connection from Autumn Woods in this area with their water services up to M-59. And there was a lot of discussion about who would pay for that, how would it get paid for. There was also some discussion about whether we really need more water main along M-59. With this development, Mr. Gronau is proposing that he would pay, he would construct and pay for that connection at his cost. And what that entails is, instead of an eight-inch water main coming up here and servicing this project, we would build a 12-inch water main from the connection point, which is right about that location, west along M-59, up through the development to an area right in here, all in ductile iron. At that point, we would convert the plastic pipe over to the westerly property line, and then there would be a 12-inch directional bore under this wooded area to connect to the water main that's stubbed from the Autumn Woods Development toward the San Marino Development.
If I can just zoom in on one particular.
So that is the connection right there that we would tie into. This is our property up in here. So again, with this 25 units, Mr. Gronau is proposing to make that connection for the township at his cost. We do believe that this is a win-win situation for both the developer and the township. For Mr. Gronau, he gets to build a development in a product that he believes there's a demand for, one that he could build and sell relatively quickly. So in that regard, it is a win-win, it is a win situation for him. The benefits that the township gets is this, we believe, is a development that's compatible with the uses around there. You don't have to worry about the quasi-public, quasi-public master plan designation. That could be taken right off the board with this development. It would be a single-family development, which we're proposing perpetuity. Another benefit to township is you would get that water main connection that the township is asking for at no cost to the township. So a great benefit there. We have done some numbers on that, I'd be happy to share that with you. The cost for that, we believe, is about $70,000 on the estimates that we have in talking to different contractors. And that does include the credit that Mr. Gronau would receive for not building the water main all along M-59, which we talked about at the last Planning Commission meeting also. So the delta between those two is about $70,000. And lastly, we believe it would be a benefit to the township because you're going to get a product that we don't think is available in the township. This is really an empty nester's retirement-type product. There is a similar type product going in in Osceola Township that Polty Homes is building. They're selling at a phenomenal rate. We don't believe that this product is available in the township, and it just gives this area something else in addition to the duplexes, the apartments, and the single-family homes in the area. With that, I will let Mr. Gronau talk a little bit more about his research and what he's done looking at the market in the area and what there is a demand for, and after that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay.
Now, Steve Gronau, I just wanted to hand you a little more research that he did from here for you tonight. He's, sorry for the black and white on the elevation. Color it up if you think of the appropriate. Gets the essence of the front elevation of a home to talk about building. Basically, what these are is real high-end ranches. It's small square footage but high amenity construction. And from what I'm getting from my customers, I'm building in two developments right now, one in Fenton and one in Brighton. And the audience that we feel is the most viable in the new home construction market is 55-up. It's folks that are looking to downsize out of the, I call them the old McMansions, the folks that are in the big, kind of functionally dated, three-to-three-thousand-ish square-foot homes that are now looking to downsize with less maintenance and less square footage to take care of. Polty has already kind of boiled out that market and is doing an absolutely amazing job at the Villas of Osceola on Latson Road. This model is kind of patterned after that product, except we're going to amp it up with more brick, more stone, standard granite, standard heated floors, standard oak. There's no cheese, no low-end anything. They're all very, very high-end build-outs, and they're spec'd that way as a base package. So the absorption rate we've seen them experiencing over there is approximately seven to eight units per month, which is a number that even in the heyday was unattainable in the best construction sites around Livingston County. They've now moved into their last phase and have, out of 70 units that they started with, they have about six left in the last phase. So I think they've done a good job proving where the market was headed. This is the reason primarily that we switched gears from June to today, is that the product that we initially envisioned here was just your typical half-acre lot with your typical three-to-four-bedroom colonial that is being purchased by more of the younger generation. And that market, as we have struggled with in Fenton, the buyers cannot qualify for mortgages, the payment requirement now with today's lending requirements is greater, and it's just been a struggle. We got them all sold over a three-year period in Fenton, but it really proved the point where we think the market is headed. So, you know, in a nutshell, I'd love to be able to pull this water main through for the township. It's about $140,000 total cost. David mentioned the portion, the difference, that we pick up on behalf of the township. We have contacted a good contractor that we've used before, Arcee Boring. The cost of the bore over on the Autumn Woods side is where we could run into a lot of trouble. He points out that his proposal and all proposals for this type of a bore, 12-inch bore requires a 20-inch auger, which is a huge piece of metal to push through the ground. Anything that he hits during the progress of this bore, it's a 400-foot bore, will drive the cost up exponentially, and we don't know what that's going to be yet. If he runs into it, it's a time and material add to the contract. So it is kind of a high-risk situation for us, but if the township will allow us to grace us with a concession on the two-and-through rule, which we talked about extensively with David and some of the other folks, and allow us to go to 25 units here, we feel we can bring the product that's being asked for by the community, and we can complete this water main loop, which your engineer thinks is a good idea. So, you know, with that, I've run the numbers, and we're trying to come up with some sort of work on both sites today, but that's really the essence of what I wanted to say. I am involved, David mentioned the quasi-public zoning designation, and really, there is another way to go with this site, and I do have a lot of friends in the church community who would look at this for a church. I don't know that it is wanted as a church property. I don't know that the township wants it as a church property, but I think it's viable. There's certainly a lot of interest in this community for faith-based organizations, and it's a perfect site for most organizations size-wise and price-wise, and the zoning is pretty much right for it right now in master plan. So with that, I'll try to answer any questions you might have or clarify my position on anything we're trying to do here.
Okay. Now, we'll open it up for the commission. Any questions?
To take a question, I'm talking to the planner. Are the elevation that you're showing here, is that going to be buried in any way?
Yes. I gave you like a bare minimum, just to give you an idea of one front elevation. There are four variations of this type of home, which, as part of David's review, he mentioned a pattern book. You'd see that at the appropriate time with the Planning Commission, with your staff. I didn't submit it tonight, but yeah, the answer is yes, John. We would break up those elevations considerably.
Is it the anticipation that, like, for example, the Millpoint Development, as well as the Cobblestone, the people that own those homes cut their own grass, some common areas are handled by the association? Is it anticipated that the folks that would be using this product would be maintaining the landscape and areas surrounding the property as well? Is that what it's, or will that end up being more of a common element that will be handled? Because I know that in some areas in Birmingham, for example, these kinds of developments, nobody does their own.
That is exactly what they're telling us that they want. No cutting grass, no painting anything, no worrying about the roof. They want the walks and drives shoveled right to the door. And so basically, the association fee covers 100% of the exterior maintenance.
So is this a condominium project, not a site condo development? Is that what this is? This is going to be the Villas of Heartland, and it's going to be 25 units. And so the way I read this is that the people are buying the inside of their house. They're not the outside. It's the association's responsibility. Association's going to cover the insurance and the lawn, and the yard is not theirs.
Correct.
So when you did your 32% open space calculation, how much of the yard of those condos was included in that calculation?
This is a color wrong that I put together that depicts just that. The area in the light green here is the area that is not part of the quote-unquote "open space." Generally went behind the house about 30 feet. Anything beyond that would be considered open space, and that also includes this area right here. So the kind of the darker green area, that is open space, and then the project is depicted, that comes to about 32%. Does that answer your question?
It does. Thank you.
I noticed, and the planner also mentioned that there's no interior sidewalks on the site. Is that the case?
We do not show any on the plan. I don't really know that we've gotten that far into the details of the project.
I think you had them on the 18, did you have them on the 18-unit plan?
I think we had a sidewalk on one side.
Yes.
Yeah.
Because I think we were trying to connect it to Autumn Woods.
Right. I'm not sure what Autumn Woods has in it, but what we were thinking on this project, this darker line would be a great walking path around here for the people that live within the development. And that path would be about four-tenths of a mile, and for the demographics of this product, it is a nice little walk. And we don't feel that that's too intrusive on the neighbors. We have this tree line along San Marino that would be maintained, and there's also open space in Autumn Woods in this area, so, and that's where we're closest to the property line. So we think that's a good alternative to sidewalks. Certainly, that would be a discussion we could have when we get to actual site plan approval.
What was your idea on the material for that walkway?
Woodchips is usually what we do with these.
And then street trees? I see they're shown on that graphic there. Is that anticipated then?
It is anticipated. Again, I didn't do this particularly against the ordinance. I think the ordinance may require two street trees per lot. I just did want to show some trees along there, but we would certainly comply with whatever the ordinance calls for.
I'm happy with the density. I like to see it. I think you're right. That's what we need in the township. They'll probably sell for the best.
Now, you mentioned a 12-inch water line picking up and running through the site development and then connecting with Autumn Woods. But if I'm not mistaken, the print says an eight-inch.
The print does say an eight-inch.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. Again, this print was done quite some time ago, and it's one of the concessions or one of the things that Mr. Gronau is willing to do with this 25-unit is to upsize that to a 12-inch and make that connection. And I think there's a letter in your packet that Mr. Gronau wrote in that regard, that he is willing to do that with a 12-inch main.
And part of that consideration is not extending the water line across the entire frontage?
That's correct. Right now, the water main ends back here at the property line.
Right.
So we would extend that, you know, up to this bit right here.
And then break it down.
And into the development. So we would not, the two-and-through, which was talked about extensively the last time, we would not put in the piece, the remaining piece along the M-59 frontage, thinking that there's never going to be a need for it.
If I could clarify just on that aspect, and I know the Planning Commission doesn't necessarily get too involved in the infrastructure side of things all the time, but it is a requirement of Heartland Township's engineering and design standards that where the water main comes up to the development's property line, it's the obligation of the developer to extend it across the property's frontage. You know, the Autumn Woods developer was required to bring the 12-inch water main to Mr. Gronau's East property line, and the intent is for, when this property develops, Mr. Gronau does his development, to bring it all the way across his property to, you know, pay it forward, kind of a thing. We recognize that because of some grade changes in through here, there was some engineering difficulty with extending a 12-inch water main all the way to Mr. Gronau's West property line. So the, and this was over the course of many discussions, many phone calls, many emails, the proposed solution to that was rather than bring, do a true two-and-through and run the 12-inch main all the way across the property's frontage within the public right-of-way, to bring it in through the development, and as Mr. Leclerc has described, extend it through the south end of Mr. Gronau's property and through the common area of the Autumn Woods Development through here, and stub it to what is actually utility easement through, between two lots of the San Marino Development, and to loop it to the existing water main, which you see in blue for Autumn Woods. So in so doing, you're accomplishing two things. You're creating a loop with the water main system. You're creating a loop with the water main system, which creates redundancy and is good infrastructure planning, and you're also creating the opportunity to someday, potentially, extend the water main into the San Marino development through this existing easement. So I just want to be clear that what Mr. Grono, to some extent, is proposing is what would be required. He is, in lieu of a true two-and-through, where he'd be extending it all the way across his property's frontage along M-59, he's instead bringing it and stubbing it to here, and the through portion of the two-and-through would be here, so that you could bring it through Autumn Woods.
Yep.
So essentially, he's meeting a requirement.
He is meeting a requirement, but he's also providing a benefit, which is creating the loop.
He is, he is.
Exactly. We don't currently have, which is something...
Yes.
I know that the township board was interested in understanding.
I wanted to clarify the point that, yes, the loop is absolutely a benefit. The two-and-through is a requirement, and what is being proposed is an alternative to that requirement.
What's the plastic versus the iron ductile pipe? And I assume that it's being proposed as plastic for cost purposes?
Yes and no. The requirement is for 12-inch ductile iron. That's in the engineering design standards. If they were to run a 12-inch main all the way across this frontage along the M-59 right-of-way, it would have to be 12-inch ductile iron. Mr. Grono is proposing 12-inch ductile iron through most of his property and transitioning right in about here, Mr. Leclerc, correct me if I'm wrong, to a 12-inch plastic, essentially. Now, the plastic is less expensive, but the intent there is because they're going to be boring it through the common area of Autumn Woods, rather than putting a ductile iron pipe in the ground, which would require eliminating most, if not all, of these trees and eliminating a potential buffer, or an existing buffer, if you do the directional bore, which you can only do with the plastic, you can preserve, hopefully, a lot of these trees. So that was the township and Mr. Grono agreeing that, while it is a cost savings for Mr. Grono, potentially, to go from ductile iron to plastic, it's also an effort to preserve some existing vegetation.
Go ahead, Mike.
David, if you would go back, yeah, just move up on the aerial photograph that showed the homes in the...
The site plan over top of the aerial?
Yes, please.
This is the one we have to keep rotating at?
Okay. So my next question is, in this aerial view, there was some question concerning where the road right-of-way versus the property existed. So does this pictorial represent the actual setback from the county's perspective, or from the actual...
It does. What they're showing is the line of the planned right-of-way.
Okay.
Which you can see, so typically, public sidewalks are one foot inside the right-of-way. So you can see where the existing sidewalk is for Autumn Woods. You can see how it's just inside that line. So it's a right-of-way consistent with what's already at Autumn Woods, and I may want to verify this with Mr. Leclerc, but I know in a lot of our conversations, the question, the intent was to have the lots within Chestnut Development closest to M-59 have them be no closer to the road than, let me switch to here, than this first house in Autumn Woods.
And hence, that was the reason for my question. I wanted to make sure that we were looking at apples-to-apples here relative to the next-door subdivision. With that said, after driving through Autumn Woods and looking at their housing density relative to the perspective as being proposed, I don't have any objection to the density. I think it would fit on this particular parcel. It's kind of a unique parcel, and I don't see where it would be a detriment to either of the neighboring subdivisions that are already existing. So I personally don't have a problem with it.
And so I have a thought there, this kind of contrary, and it would be, I think, is there a requirement that the homes be 30 feet apart?
In a planned development, that's the baseline.
And what is the actual separation between these homes?
You might have to bear with me for a moment.
I saw 20, but I don't know if that's just, if that's been the actual number, if that's just a guess.
I was venture that...
It's 20 feet.
Autumn Woods is 20 feet. Millpoint is definitely 20 feet. I know that. Just from a consistency standpoint, they're 20 feet.
So then, those weren't planned developments?
Autumn Woods.
Autumn Woods was.
Yes. Millpoint was a consent judgment. It was its own animal.
So then it would look, so your opinion would look similar to Autumn Woods in the separation? So maybe the picture, that the rendering is not really a fair assessment, because it looks like they're stacked a lot closer to each other in the previous slide that you had. But if it's similar to the adjacent developments, then I guess that, then I don't have an issue with that. But I am curious though, what those others are.
And part of our review was looking at the Autumn Woods site plan, and in the Autumn Woods site plan, which is, you're correct, was a planned development, the minimum setback between those houses was 20 feet, and I can pick any of the houses in here and get out the measuring tool and confirm that, I promise you that between those two houses, the separation's 20 feet.
So it's just that, it's just a picture to me that is a, the way that the little drawing, the little homes are sized, apparently, it just looks like, as you drive down that road, it's going to be just a wall of homes with not a separation, but if it's similar to what's in the adjacent developments, then I think it, then I think it would probably be okay, but it's, maybe it's a visual to me that.
I think though, the footprint for some of the homes in Autumn Woods is much bigger, so I don't know. In looking at that, I don't, I think, it looks to me like they're 20 feet apart. Are they 20 feet apart?
Yes, they are.
It might not be irrelevant, when we're speaking of spacing and just the feel of development as you're driving through, a lot of the homes in Autumn Woods are side-entry garages and are set back from the road, further than what's proposed here. You know, recognize that these are all two-car, attached two-car garages, and all of them project further out toward the road than the front door of the house. And I think we've seen developments that have that look, and it does have a certain look to it.
And according to the, on page 49, these would be, and again, I don't know if these are real numbers or not, but these, the fronts, would be 30 feet from the curb versus 45 in Autumn Woods. So maybe that, you know, that distance times two off the center of the road just makes it look tightened up more to the road. And then, you know, thus gives the feeling of being maybe boxed in isn't the right word to use.
Have you driven through the Villas of Osceola? Because they're saying this is similar to that product.
I have not.
Okay. I'm not knocking the, it will be, what you will see when you go down the road are garage doors. By the very style of these buildings, I'm not saying good, bad, or indifferent, that's what you notice are the garage doors. Because the garage door is the prominent feature on every home. So when you drive up and down the road, it looks like a row of garage doors. So if you want, and this does look similar to that particular product. So if you're interested in what that looks like at Midson-Latson Road.
Do you know what the spacing is there between the...
No. They're closed, but I don't know what it is.
It's called Villas of...
Osceola. It's between 59 and Hughes Road on the west side of Latson.
Latson and what?
Latson north of Hughes, south of 59. I definitely see a market for this product. I don't, to be honest with you, I don't think the development's big enough for it. I think that we could sell more than 25. I still not sure that I'm convinced it's the right place for it. I think I told you that that last time. But, you know, if they're matching in what would look like the density of an Autumn Woods, you're getting through some of the issues that I have with the development. And that is that when we look at that development, and good planning would not put two-acre parcels and one-quarter acre, one-third acre parcels next to one-acre parcels. You just wouldn't mix that stuff that way. And that's what this looks like. But if you're telling me that the distance between the buildings is similar to what Autumn Woods is, that's going to take some of that away from it. There are requirements for higher densities next to lower densities for some, looking at some screening in the backyards. I don't know what that means here, but the ordinance does have that in it, and the PD does also, so you'll need to at least take a look at that. I don't know what that means. It may mean certain spots are, because there is a natural tree line there. There's also some big gaps, and some of the biggest gaps are where the houses are closest together. And residential is residential, but when you read the zoning ordinance, they're different from what you're proposing and what those are.
And so I would also agree. I think it's a good product. I think that there is probably for sure demand for a house like this. And I like how you're, if I have it correct, so standard granite countertops, standard heated floors. Is that heated floors throughout the...
People are just really responding well. It seems like if you just put every option in the house and make it a standard feature, it, folks are just like falling all over themselves for it. It's incredible. Instead of building a base house and then kind of nickel-diming all the features, I'm taking the opposite approach. All the houses we build, we build it with the best appliances, the best roof, the best foundation, the best strip package, crown molding, hardwood floors, granite in every room, high-end cabin. Everywhere we can make the house kind of the same as a million-dollar house, just in a smaller footprint. That's what people... Would happen to fall with the double... He's right, and we're selling from 2,700 square feet for 800,000. And just because we make them like the BMW of houses. The fact it's being all finished is high-end and best of everything. And we roll up, we do have a great architect who is very sensitive to the area, and you rate very high on it, too. We're going to further drive this in and out to create a stagger effect, and using stone and color, break up the use of gate down the road, where we're censoring more of a community than a production environment. I agree with you, and I don't want to...
Okay. Just a general question, because I know we've dealt with this when we looked at another condominium project, with these shorter driveways and guest parking, fire marshal, and probably only going to be able to park on one side of the road. I'm not tipping him off, because I'm sure he may pick up on it. Do you have enough places for people to have family over? And I guess you're going to have to figure that out.
Well, they are all two-car garages. There's room for two, probably on the side where the sidewalk is not, probably four cars in the garage on the sidewalk side. If there is sidewalks on one side, that would limit it to two. And what's parking on one side of the street?
He may not. I just know like Autumn Woods is.
Right, right.
So, just a question.
One of the things that I notice in Villas of Osceola is they go with minimum width driveways, and you really can't get two cars side-by-side without being on the lawn a little bit. And the standard on all our driveways, even in Brighton, at our more expensive homes, is a minimum of 14 feet versus 12. And that extra gives you enough to get two cars side-by-side in the driveway, so you could, if you have enough depth, you can get two in the garage and four in the driveway before you're in the street.
Okay. Questions? There is no action needed tonight, other than, does the planning commission have any other questions? Just need to have the meeting minutes...
There was one.
Right ahead.
I noticed in the comments that in terms of the traffic coming out, you don't, they're not requiring you at this time, or is that still up in the air in terms of putting an island so that you have, you know, how like in Autumn Woods, you have to separate...
Boulevard entry?
Yeah, boulevard entry, is that?
We're not planning a boulevard entry. We had some discussion, I think, when we were here in June about the need for a left-turn lane into development. The last traffic counts that we have on M-59, this development would not want to, similar to what the last one, the last one did not also.
Okay. Yeah, I think we'd still be looking for M.D. to comment on 25 versus 18.
Versus 18, right.
So you'll be going back.
Yeah, we do have to get their permission for the XL-Dcel lane that we're going to put on our side.
Yeah. M.D. did give us some comments on the 18-unit proposal. If there has been comments on the 25-unit proposal, correct me if I'm wrong, I haven't seen much.
No, we've not got comments from them. We've run the numbers, and they're very similar to what they were before. So unless traffic is on M-59, we're still under the warrant graph, and we will have that updated, won't be the site man approval with M.D. There's a chance that traffic could be higher. I don't think so. The traffic numbers, I think, were 2,000, 30,000 of the last...
Okay. Any further questions, anyone? If not, I'd like to make sure that the meeting minutes show that the applicant has completed the conceptual phase of the planned development process here with the planning commission. We'll get those in the minutes, please. Other than that, I think you're done for this evening.
Thank you.
And thank you for coming forward, and look forward to seeing you in the future.
Thank you.
All right, I think we are ready to move to item 8B, which is Site Plan Application Number 528, the Wood Edge Preliminary Site Condominium Plan. And sorry for making the audience wait this evening. And what I think we'll do is turn this over to our planner, David Campbell, for a quick preview.
Thanks again. And for the benefit of the audience, I know most of the folks in the audience are here to hear about this particular plan. The planning department schedules these agenda items on a kind of a first-come, first-served basis, and so even though we knew that this particular plan would generate some questions, we assign them to the agenda based on when the application was submitted. What is proposed this evening for this particular property, which is on the... Pull it up. South side of Maxfield Road, on the south end of Maxfield Lake, is a 21-unit site condominium on a piece of property that collectively is 20.8 acres. The reason I say collectively is this property is somewhat unique in that there's quite a bit of history. This was originally a platted subdivision from 1926 that showed these north-to-south roads, and then this road along the back half, that had, I believe, 101 cottage lots in through here in 1926. Obviously, that never got built. But that's why this property, at least on GIS data that we have, actually shows three pieces of property with some right-of-way in between. That right-of-way's been vacated by a judgment in 2008. My letter speaks to that. This will all get cleaned up if this plan were to proceed and get approved. I just, I wanted to at least try to clarify why you're not looking at one piece of property, but actually three, for the moment, anyway. The, this property does have some history beyond that planted sub in 1926. There was a proposal for a 22-unit development, I believe, that this planning commission saw from 2006 through 2008. That was Glenn Properties, Mr. Duke. That particular development came to the planning commission a number of times. It had to go to the ZBA for some issues, and we'll speak to that a little bit. But based on the economy of that time, 2008, that plan got to a certain stage in the approval process and installed, and obviously never got built, and the property's just been sold to Mr. Teko, Mr. Ballinger. The, what they're proposing is a 21-unit site condominium. What they're proposing is a 21 unit site condominium with one cul-de-sac road coming in off of Maxfield Road and a second emergency-only access west of that. Two of the units, proposed units 18 and 19, would actually have direct access out onto Maxfield Road. The rest of the units would have access to this proposed private cul-de-sac off of Maxfield with added issue of units number 20 and 21 would have a shared driveway coming off of that proposed private road to get to their units in the back southeast corner of the property. Procedurally, a site condominium is a two-step process, but each of those steps require at least one trip to the planning commission, one trip to the township board. There's a preliminary site condominium and then a final site condominium. Preliminary site condominium comes before the planning commission. They potentially make a recommendation to the township board. Township board approves preliminary and then the applicant comes back again for final, both in front of the planning commission and in front of the township board. It's at the preliminary that the, really the nitty-gritty details of the site plan need to get ironed out. Typically, a final site condominium is when you get more into the reviewing and approving the master deed and bylaws for a site condominium like this. Planning department has drafted a review letter dated January 21st, 2015, where we speak to a number of issues, overview of the sites, the review procedure that I just spoke to a little bit, the proposed density in open space, the issue of access on a Maxfield Road, both in terms of the public access, but then the emergency access to the west. Traffic generation, I know that was, a number of these issues were brought up by the members of the audience during the public comment and so our letter does speak to those issues and I can certainly go into more detail on that. This is a, proposed to be a paved private road, which would be a requirement based on the number of units proposed. The applicant has the option to either propose a curb and gutter system or an open ditch system and the applicant has opted in this case to do the open ditch with the paved road. So no curbs. The plan is not very dissimilar from the proposal that came before the planning commission back in 2000, between 2006 and 2008, with the exception that 21 units are proposed here, 22 units proposed then. It's notable that this piece of property has 20 sewer taps assessed to it. There is sewer service along Maxfield Road across this property's frontage. And so it was, that was an agreement with the developer at the time to take on the assessment for 20 sewer REUs. So to some degree, the fate of this property was sealed when that assessment went into place. It's reasonable to assume that whoever bought it or developed it would want to take full advantage of the 20 sewer taps that are on the property. And I think that's important for everyone to understand that, you know, this property does have an obligation to a sewer debt and it's reasonable for the developer to want to get a return on investment for a piece of property that does have that sewer obligation. The letter does go into review of the setback requirements. We speak to the utilities, we speak to the natural features, the wetlands and the woodlands. The landscaping, I know, was an issue that I think the planning commission could provide some feedback to the applicant on this evening. We had reviews from the Department of Public Works, from the Township Engineer and from the Township Fire Marshal. The Fire Marshal comments are particularly of issue as it relates to the proposed emergency access. We do speak to Lone Tree Road. We can get into more of what our thoughts are on that, but we would like to think that this proposal is actually to the benefit of the other properties that have their access via Lone Tree Road. Because Lone Tree Road is very much, there's a lot of open-ended questions with Lone Tree Road and part of getting this development in place would be the opportunity to formalize some access easements across this property so that those property owners know that formally, legally, they do have access to at least this, the portion of Lone Tree Road that traverses this property. We can talk a little bit more about that. The recommendation of staff is that while we do feel that this is a reasonable and feasible development that would be a benefit to Heartland Township, we do feel that there's enough open-ended questions that the planning staff was not prepared to make a recommendation to the planning commission. I know the applicant is prepared to address some of those issues for the planning commission's benefit. If and when the planning commission is ready to do so, the procedure would be that they would make a recommendation to the township board on the preliminary site condominium plan and there would be the township board's authority to grant that preliminary site condominium approval, at which time the applicant would come back for a final site condominium approval before this planning commission and again before the township board. That's my best shot at giving an overview of this property. There's a lot of history here. There's a number of issues here that we can discuss further. But if there's no questions for me at this time, it would be a good time to turn over the applicant for their overview of the project.
And if you would introduce yourselves again, that would be great.
Thank you again, Mr. Fox and Mr. Campbell, David LeClare again, Livingston Engineering, Brighton, Michigan. With me this evening, to my left, Tom Teko, owner of the property. To my immediate left and to his left, Steve Ballinger, they co-own the property and are co-developers for this project. I think that Mr. Campbell covered most of what we're proposing to do tonight. I wish I had a good copy of the previous development. I do have a copy of it. It's kind of been written on. That's the only one I have, unfortunately. I can show it to you. That project did have 22 lots on it. What we're proposing tonight is 21 lots. We do have a substantially less amount of road in this project. Let me just show you what I got. Our road right now comes up kind of like it's shown here for the single cul-de-sac. The prior 22 lot development had that road coming back out to Maxfield Road and they also had a full width road built to the back of the property. The project differs substantially from this in that we're not proposing to come out with a separate road to Maxfield and we're also not proposing to build a full width road back into the rear of the property. And that's important because when you build a road, just to clear for the road and the utilities, you have to clear about 90 feet. The shared driveway that we're doing is only going to go a portion of the way back. You can do that in about 30 to 40 feet. The fire access road that we're also building out to Maxfield Road is also about 30 to 40 foot, a clearing area for that. So by doing this, in my opinion, this is a nice wooded lot if you have a fence to it, we're going to save a substantial amount of trees by doing this lot as opposed to the one that was proposed back in 2006. I'm not quite sure how far that development got. I do know that if the ZBA approval for the 20,000 square foot lots, which is what we have in this development, I know that construction plans were done for the project, so I'm assuming that at least that preliminary site was possible, although I wasn't the engineer on the project at that time, so I cannot confirm that. But from the drawing perspective, I would think that that's probably the case. There was a lot of conversation in Mr. Campbell's letter about the fire access. We are proposing a semi-fire access coming out of the cul-de-sac, out of Maxfield Road. When the road commission first went out and looked at this development, we had good site distance in the location. They had some concerns and we did not have site distance for the proposed emergency access. We did not. There are two trees on development property, one tree just outside of the property and they're really, really close to the road, but they're right away that we need to come down along, across that area for us to get site distance there. And that's something that we could do. Those trees kind of overhang through anyways. They're a little bit dangerous because they're so close to your shoulder. So once those trees are down and we clear this area out, we'll add foot site distance for the emergency access. So we don't feel that that's an issue. A lot of the other conversation in Mr. Campbell's letter has to do with landscaping. Certainly, we're not in favor of cutting down more trees to put in landscaping. We don't want to take down any more trees than we have to. For the actual development to happen as it is, this area here in light green is the area that would have to be, turn this a little bit so you can see it all, David, that would have to be cleared for us to put the roads and the infrastructure in. So we've got this area, we've got the area where the detention pond is going to be, we've got the area for the shared drive and we've got the area for the fire emergency. That's about 22, 23% of the property. It does fall underneath the 25% threshold. Obviously, there's going to be some trees cleared when some houses are put in there. These are going to be individually built on these lots. Mr. Ballinger certainly doesn't want to take out any more trees than necessary because it is a nice wooded lot.
Will the bylaws, will the bylaws for the organization indicate that?
There will be, yeah. Yep. For this preliminary site plan approval, I don't think they're required. We do have to come back for final and you will see the master deed and bylaws at that time. On the landscaping, a lot of discussion and a lot of requirements in the township for landscape buffering around the perimeters, around pond. We feel that we have a nice wooded piece of property here. We certainly don't want to take trees down to put trees in and we think it would be a better approach perhaps to put a preservation easement around the perimeter of the property, 25, 30 feet, whatever the planning commission feels is appropriate. And within that, we would more than meet all of the landscape buffering requirements. Some of the issues that were brought on during the call to the public, we are not planning to widen Maxfield Road. We do have to put a D-cell lane, a standard D-cell XL taper on our side of the road, but the road is not going to be widened. And I know that was a concern that somebody had at that time. There is some wetlands on the site. You want that? If you could show it with the lots, I think it'd probably be a little bit better. Just get my bearings straight here. Okay, there are two regulated wetlands on the site. Here's a little pocket of wetland that's regulated. This larger wetland on the site is also regulated by the state. We're not planning any work in those. There are a couple of wetlands on the site that are not regulated. There's a little pocket here between the homes that is not a regulated wetland. There's also a little pocket up in here which has a pond area on that I think one of the neighbors had mentioned. That is also a non-regulated wetland. However, we're not planning on doing any work in any of the wetlands. We've worked this so that the roads, the lots, kind of work around them. The drains for the site, it's going to be an open ditch roadway. All of this drainage is going to come back, drain into a new detention pond. From there, it will discharge into a county drain, which is right here along Lone Pine Road or Lone Tree Road, I guess is. We do have an overflow pulvert that we're planning from this little wetland pocket into that drainage system. We're also planning an overflow pulvert from this regulated wetland into our detention pond. There was some concern about perhaps the water level of this getting too high and because of that, we're going to put this outlet pipe in so that that will not be an issue. Most of the area that's draining into this pond, a lot of it's going to be now redirected toward our back detention pond. So we do not feel that we're going to have an adverse effect on this pond right here. We'll get into that a little bit more with our calculations once we get into construction plans for the project, but we certainly don't think it's going to be an issue. A lot of discussion on Lone Tree Road. Lone Tree Road, as was mentioned, is not a county road, runs up the side of the property line here. It's about 10, 12 feet on this development property. We're not planning any improvements for Lone Tree Road. We're not going to even suggest that it be removed. Certainly open to the idea of having an easement in it if that's what's necessary to maintain the access that's there. We're not trying to restrict that or alter that in any fashion. We do have these back lots set back 33 feet from the property line. That little dash line there, that's where Lone Tree Road actually physically runs up in through there and you can see it's just along the property line there. So whatever the township deems inappropriate easement along there, we would certainly be willing to entertain that. Some of the other things that were brought up in the call to the public, we're not planning any lighting within the development. There's going to be no lighting out at the entrance. Really, the only lighting would be whatever porch lights, garage lights that would be on the houses, similar to a lot of other developments. There was also some discussion about the entrance to our development onto Maxfield Road. If you could just window out a little bit, David. Our entrance to the development is in this location. Unfortunately, there's never a good location to put an entrance when there's houses across the road, across Maxfield Road. It's pretty much lined with houses. Can you go to the aerial, David, on, put the aerial onto that?
Uh, yeah. The aerial with the site plan?
Yes. If you could just kind of blow up around the entrance there. The gentleman spoke earlier, I'm guessing that this is probably his driveway right here. I was aware when we did this that we do have driveways along the other side of Maxfield Road. I tried to align our entrance so that the outbound traffic, where there would be lights, lines up with that drive and that any headlights would be pointing more toward these two drives. Again, there's not a great spot to put it. We could slide it a little bit one way or the other. I don't know that it would be better. Unfortunately, like I said, there is a lot of houses, a lot of driveways along that area and we feel this is probably as good a spot as any. I think that was all of the issues that were mentioned during the call to the public. If I missed any, I'd be happy to address them.
I just had a comment on the Indiana bat. Are you familiar with any habitat for the Indiana bat in that area?
We've not done a habitat analysis on the property, but I am familiar with the Indiana bat. There's also a long-eared bat in the area that has been creating some issues. I don't think they're on the endangered species. They might be on the threatened species. To solve the problems for the Indiana bat and the reason I'm familiar with it is we're doing the survey work for the new I-96 US-23 interchange. That particular project has the long-eared bat on it. The solution for that is that the trees have to be taken down before a certain time of year, 1st of May, I think it is. That is the time where the bats come back north. If the trees are gone, they don't nest there. You know, it's not to say that you can't take down trees, they just have to be down. If there is that particular species in the area, they have to be down by a certain time of year. I don't know if there's an Indiana bat or a long-eared bat in this area, to be honest with you. I've never heard of it being an issue in Heartland Township.
We had it with one of our commercial developments, but Jeff and I were just nodding because I believe it was the harvesting of the trees had to occur.
Right.
At a certain time of the year.
Yeah, and oddly as it seems, the solution for that is cut the trees down before they come back.
Before they come back.
Right, right.
Then they'll go somewhere else.
Right.
I think we went through that with the pond development.
Right, right. That could probably be arranged for this project if it came to that, if there was an issue for it. Again, we don't want to cut down any more trees than absolutely possible on the project, so. I think that's all the issues. I would hope that the tree preservation and the landscape buffers we could work through. We do have a lot of work to do on the project after we get preliminary site plan approval. I don't see anything on the project that's going to change the layout. We've got the site distance issues figured out. We are going to have the emergency access that the Fire Marshal wants. I think if the planning commission concurs with the landscape buffers and whatnot, I think most of the major issues that Mr. Campbell had, we've kind of discussed and I would certainly hope that we could move forward this evening with some sort of preliminary approval. That would be our wish so we can get moving forward with our hydro report and some of the other things that have to be done for the project.
Well, I would, just in general on the development, I would encourage you to leave as much of the natural landscaping, the trees, as you possibly can. I would agree wholeheartedly with your statement. We don't want to cut it down just to plant it. And I think that is a heavily wooded lot. We went through this property with another development many years ago, as all of you have identified. And it may sound unusual, but I don't believe that this particular development should have street trees personally. You can listen to what the others say. I believe street trees belong when you have curbs, when you have maybe sidewalks, but I don't believe street trees function well in open ditch situations. Not looking to take something out that you're proposing, but I just don't think at the end of the day, they look right. You're better off letting the homeowner do whatever it is that they do. And in regards to the detention pond landscaping, I think in that environment with it being as heavily treed as it is, the more you can work with nature and allow it to be natural, the more aesthetically pleasing it will be to the people that live there and it will look not like a man-made detention basin. there, and it will look not like a man-made detention basin. So what I would look for is trying to leave the natural characteristics of the property as intact as you can possibly do without tearing them out to replace them with something that doesn't look natural because we had a section in the ordinance that suggested you do that. And when you go through those wooded subdivisions and the, and if that's the proposal and that's the way you present it, that would be, those are very pretty-looking neighborhoods. We have a great piece of property here. Yes, it has a lot of water on it, but we don't have to come through and make it a cornfield. So the more that you do to leave it in its natural state, probably the more sellable the property is, in addition to people who want that type of environment. But that's what you have to put forward. That's where, for me, I don't know where everybody else will be.
I agree 100% with that, leaving as much natural as you can. The kind of person that wants to move to that area, I don't think would want it to look like the city. I don't think they would want, they're moving out there for that reason. And also the street trees or whatever, however you refer to them, along the road, I don't think that, to me, is necessary. I think that's taking away from the natural look of the area. So I would agree.
On the issue of Lone Tree, I did some research on Lone Tree before, and the reason why, it's my understanding that's a section line and therefore a public right-of-way. It's always, will be a public right-of-way. It's just not maintained by, it's never been vacated by the road commission in that it's just simply been certifi, decertified from receiving funding. So when they get their Act 51 funding and it gets distributed as to how, it's based on what roads they maintain, that road has been taken off of roads to be maintained. That's why it looks the way it does. And they say, you know, if you talk to them, they're going to say it's treated as like a private road. It's still a public right-of-way. The public has the right to use that road all the way through. And I know there are some problems with some folks to the west, where some, there's some people that have left debris in that right-of-way that doesn't belong there, but that, that is a public right-of-way. So to the extent you might be required to put an easement in place, it may, it may be just simply redundant because of the way in which that road is viewed. So, but I just wanted to kind of clarify that. So there's some concern about Lone Tree and what was happening at Lone Tree, I think, by one of the residents that spoke earlier.
And he brought up easements there. I would support the conservation easement around the perimeter of the property, wherever you could do that. That would fall right in line with all of the, leaving it alone and leaving it as natural as you possibly can, and would suggest that you vary what that conservation easement is based upon what your plan is going to require you to do there.
And it would be of the benefit- I'm sorry?
The more, the more you can serve, the better.
Well, it'd be of the benefit to the future owner of the lots to understand what they can and can't do on their property. It'll certainly be to the benefit of myself or whoever's sitting in my chair years from now, or hopefully not too many years from now, when, when someone goes to build on these lots and someone in my position has to explain to them that they are limited with what they can and can't do on their property. If that's clearly defined through an easement and in the, in the master deed, it's, it's, it works out better in the long run.
We're not going to stop the development. This could have had 100 cottages on it.
Yes.
It's going to have, it could have 20 houses on it, but we can protect the natural features as best we can. And I would encourage that.
Dave, can you speak a little bit to the fire access, the fire road access, and what the alternative was, so that I can understand it a little bit better?
Sure. So the fire marshal does speak to it in his letter, and what he's saying is, because there's only one point of public access into this development, and that is the, the public access, you know, the, the private road off of Maxfield, Maxfield Road. From the fire marshal's perspective, if that road ever gets, gets blocked for one reason or another, the, the emergency responders have to have another way to get to, get into the development. So the, the requirement is for the emergency access on the west side of the property. Now, what got a little confusing with this, and I, Mr. Leclerc may be able to speak more to what has been clarified since we drafted our letter, was the road commission was going to require site distance requirements for this emergency access, even though in a perfect world, nobody ever has to use the emergency access because there's never an emergency. And that was going to be a challenge to meet those site distance requirements, given A, the, the existing vegetation through here, and B, the bend in, in Maxfield Road right there. If you had to meet the site distance requirements on a road that has a bend to it, the, the applicant was going to have to take out some vegetation and, and take it out on property that they don't control. So we, we as a planning department needed to get some clarification on that and whether this was actually going to be the ultimate location of the, the emergency access. It sounds like, if I understand Mr. Leclerc, they have confirmed that they can and intend to put it here. When you ask Mr. Newsom what the alternatives are, the fire marshal in this letter does suggest that he would be willing to waive the requirement for the secondary access altogether if the applicant were to agree and presumably in the, in the master deed for a residential fire suppression system in each one of the, the future houses. The, the fire marshal contends that it's not an overwhelming cost, and that it, it may be something of a, of a wash when compared to the cost of, of having to install and maintain in perpetuity this emergency access. I don't want to speak for the applicant. I, in a conversation with Mr. Leclerc, I got the impression that that wasn't something that they were looking to agree to, but that was the fire marshal's proposed alternative to otherwise requiring the secondary emergency access.
So that's going to be basically, that's going to be a road. It's going to be a gravel drive into the-
It is, and it's going to have to be maintained. There's going to be agreements with the future homeowners association to maintain it, to keep it free of, of snow and debris and piles of yard waste and swing sets and everything else. The, the fire marshal would, or the fire department would inspect it periodically, make sure it is kept clear. It would have to be built to withstand the, the heavy trucks, the fire trucks that they'd have to get back there. It would have to be marked, it would have to be delineated so that the homeowners now and forever understand that, that this area has to be kept clear.
And, and I'm going to add to that. In my previous development, we had one of these, and what they were allowed to do after it was built to that standard is they were allowed to, it ended up being planted with grass.
Yeah, they can't throw chops on it.
All we had to do was mow it.
Right.
And it wasn't even every week. And then in the wintertime, we had to have the snowplow guy
Just run through.
Run through there. So it looked like a grass trail, but it really was the fire department's access or ambulance.
And is there intended to be a gate of any sort up there? Then, okay.
Yeah, it's not the shortcut out.
Right.
Was that the lock box that was mentioned?
Yep, there would be a knock box on there, yes.
Okay, and then in the same vein as the access road, was there any thought to, or is it possible even to, for those two lots that are outbound, 20 and 21, to have access off of Lone Tree Road there?
You know what?
Instead of the shared driveway?
Yeah, we talked about it a little bit, and I had a long conversation with the road commission about Lone Tree Road. They claim that it never was a public road. They don't want it, they don't want nothing to do with it, and I think it really brought up too many unresolved issues as far as who owns it, who's going to maintain it, you know, will it ever become of something, you know, lots and lots of issues with that. And we felt it was just as easy to put a shared drive in there and let the people, you know, continue to use Lone Tree Road as they are today.
Right, okay.
And if I could add one more thing to that, if, if that were to be the solution for 20 and 21 to come off of Lone Tree Road, it would be the applicant's obligation to improve that portion of Lone Tree Road all the way back out to Maxfield, bring it up to today's current standards for at least a shared driveway. Actually, a private road because it's serving the property.
It's serving the other property.
Yeah, so, and that's, that's a significant expense.
Why would, why would it be any different than the condition it's currently in, just extending it?
Because now you're creating more lots on it, and in our zoning ordinance says that if there's a lot of record on a existing non-conforming private road, you can build on that lot of record, but once you start talking about splits and site condos and subdivisions, then that's the trigger for building that, bringing that non-conforming private road up to current standards.
Okay.
And you're talking about bringing it up to current standards all the way out to Maxfield Road and across a, a good section of property that they don't own.
And the shared driveway is intended to be paved or patrolled?
Yes, it will be paved, yes.
I think Dave is requesting that we have you put that in when you put the road in.
Yes, yeah.
So that we don't get into
Right.
Whatever.
Yeah, I think what I said was I don't want to be in the middle of the fight between the owners of lots 20 and 21 over who, who builds it when and who pays for it.
Now, they, they certainly would like a recommendation tonight, is what I heard them ask, but I'm certainly seeing what you're saying, and you're looking to have a nice, neater package, and some of these things we talked about addressed here prior to sending this to the board.
I still feel that way, and I, I'll say again that I, I feel this is a, a development that is certainly a feasible development. I, a lot of my comments had to do with the existing woodlands and, and preserving trees in lieu of, I, I agree with what the applicant's saying. There's not a whole lot of logic in taking down existing mature vegetation to replace it with, with new landscaping. That being said, I think we could all benefit from some additional information from the applicant on what are the areas to remain undisturbed. You know, I know Mr. Leclerc provided us verbally tonight with some percentages of how much of the existing vegetation is going to come out in order to put in the, the road, the private road, the, the, the emergency access. I think those kind of numbers and that kind of evaluation would be of benefit to this planning commission, what those percentages are, what does that preservation area look like, what does that undisturbed area look like. A little more detail, I think, would be in order of what is the existing vegetation. So if the planning, if this planning commission is inclined to waive a whole lot of our landscaping standards, they would have a better understanding of, of what are they waiving in order to preserve? Are we preserving quality vegetation, or, you know, are we preserving some species that are maybe of less quality? Long story short, I think there, this planning commission could benefit from a little more detail about the, the natural futures presentation so that they can make a more informed decision of, of what they are waiving if they're going to make a series of waivers of what is technically is required.
And I'd like to say that I would, I'm going to support Dave on that because I think one of the things this planning commission has done through all these years is reviewed the complete project, and we've sent the package to the board with the i's dotted and the t's crossed. And to forward something like this based upon just, we're going to do it, would be forwarding a project to the board inconsistent to the way it's operated for the last 10 years. And I think one of the reasons we have a great relationship with the board is that we know we go through these things and we get them taken care of, and when they get the information that's right. I appreciate the timeframe, and I imagine that, that a lot of what we talked about can be put on the paper and, and we can get through it, but it is, it is kind of the way it is. Does that make sense?
I guess what, what I would ask is a little bit more specifics as to what you're looking for, especially in regards to preservation. I mean, the site is, is well-wooded throughout the site. I don't know that, except for the wetland areas, that any one area of the site is any different than any others, to be honest with you. There's trees eight inches and larger throughout the site. So as far as a woodland inventory,
Yes.
You know what, I'm not even sure, you know, I don't think the landscape plan is going to change other than we may take some street trees off. You know, we've agreed to put a landscape or a preservation buffer around the exterior where no trees can be taken down. I don't know that the plan's going to really look any different. Other than that, I think the, it's always nice if the association has some leeway, some of the open space, you know, they may want to put some swing sets and whatnot. We do have some good upland open space, and some of it's in the area where the fire access would come in. That would also make a nice walking path back to a bench area, a swing set area. If there had to be a couple of trees cut down to, to make that happen, it's always nice to have that flexibility. But I do think a, you know, a preservation area around the perimeter of the site makes perfect sense, and I really think that would pretty much bring us into compliance with, with the ordinance. And that's something we could certainly add before this plan goes to the township board. With regard to the fire access, it's really not going to change. I mean, it's, it's our obligation before we come back for final site plan approval to have those trees taken down. The road commission will not give us site distance approval until that's done, and I think that's more of a final site plan issue. Boy, other than that, I don't know what else, you know, would change on the plan where it would look significantly different when we did come back.
I'm just looking at his review letter, a couple of things that, that maybe could be addressed in there. The, the open space, quote out of the letter, it seems plausible that the undeveloped portion of the 7.9 acres could accommodate 5.2 acres of open space, including 2.1 usable, but this must be demonstrated by the applicant. So I'm just wondering if it's those kinds of details that he's referring to that we can make sure. I, it's not that I don't, you know, I don't, I don't think it's that anybody doesn't trust you or whatever.
Right, right.
It's just, you know, our job is to complete the package and send it to the board with everything on there. And I, I would think if these types of things are submitted, the review on it, to get it back to us would be rather quick if I, I, I-
I hope if Mr. Leclerc will acknowledge nothing else, he will acknowledge that the planning department does everything in our power to be accommodating to the applicant in terms of getting things back in front of this planning commission in a reasonable amount of time. When, when we speak to more specificity of, of what this planning commission might be looking for, within the landscaping standards, there is some fairly detailed language pertaining to if you, you as the applicant are proposing to request a waiver from any and all landscaping requirements in order to preserve the existing plant material, here's some of the information that the planning commission would be looking for. Now, the planning commission, like most landscaping standards, is senior discretion to work within this, but there is some pretty specific language about giving the planning commission more information of what's there now, what is being proposed to take out. It's, it's not necessarily required that it's a full-on tree inventory. I understand how, how expensive that can be, and it's also difficult to do this time of year because one of the things that typically is included in a tree inventory is the, the health of the tree, and that's difficult to determine in, in January, February. But I don't think it's unreasonable to ask the applicant to provide this planning commission with some more information of, of what's there now, what's coming out, what's going to be left, so that they can make an informed decision of whether the, the intent of the existing landscaping standards are being met.
And I agree with that too, especially how carefully you grade, you know, for your detention ponds, for the roads, just kind of to show how those grades will kind of tie in with the existing and maybe how areas, you know, pockets of existing can work. So it's just kind of not the carved line.
Sure.
So I think some of that sensitivity is what we're going to look for, and I think you're after the same.
Does the, the planning commission meet once or twice in a month, twice in a month? Okay, right. And Mr. Campbell is correct. I mean, he's bent over backwards to help us get where we are today, and I certainly appreciate that. I think no problem coming back with that information. I would feel a little more comfortable if we could just get a good consensus that everybody kind of is happy with the plan, that we're not anticipating any, any major changes. That way, if the owners wanted to move forward with, you know, say our hydro report and put in some test wells, and that they would be doing that with some sort of comfort level. Obviously, nothing's guaranteed, but that would give us, I think, a little bit of, you know, relief in moving some of these things forward.
Yeah, it's not a commitment. You're looking for a general feeling. Tom, how do you feel about the plan?
I feel fine about the plan.
Okay.
Yeah.
You're comfortable with the conversation tonight?
I am, yes, completely, yeah.
Mike?
Yeah.
Sue, Joe? Yeah, I, I think you're on the right track.
We appreciate that.
So I think what we will do is look for you to get some additional information today, and we'll see how quickly we can get you back on an agenda. All right?
Thank you very much.
Okay. Again, thank you for thinking of Heartland, and we'll look forward to seeing you soon. We're going to have some questions, we're going to have a call to the public in a minute here, okay? For the public, this will be back before us, as you gathered, two more times, actually. And now is that time. We're up to item nine, which is call to the public. So if you'd like to come forward with any more questions, please step forward. Give us your name and address again so we've got it all correct.
Yes, Dan Siska.
S.I.G.CZKA, 1225 Maxfield Road.
And answer the question about the roadway, no problem there, the turn lane. But the traffic impact analysis, is there one going to be required?
Yeah, based on the number of trips that are estimated for this development, it is not a requirement either of Heartland Township or of the Livestock County Road Commission. Livestock County Road Commission has jurisdiction over the road. The report, the review letter that my department drafted does speak to, it's pretty standard on a national average for a single-family home to generate 10 trips per day. That's five trips in, five trips out. So simple math says 21 houses, 210 new trips, 105 of them in, 105 of them out. That's over the course of a 24-hour day. That's the national average. Based on the standards of the township and of the road commission, that's not enough trips to warrant a traffic impact study. Now, coming from a guy who used to do traffic impact studies for a living, what a traffic impact study is trying to determine is would the applicant be obligated to do any additional road improvements in order to accommodate all this new traffic? Would they have to pave more of Maxfield Road, for example? Would they have to widen Maxfield Road to put in a left turn lane? Now, if this were a huge development, would they have to put in a traffic signal or put in a four-lane road where there's only a two-lane road now? Based on the number of trips here, it's fair to say that we're not going to get to that point, and I don't know that anybody who lives in that area wants it to get to that point with, we're going to start talking about widening Maxfield Road or putting a traffic signal, anything like that. As far as paving Maxfield Road more than it already is, it's a fair assumption that the vast majority of the traffic that's going to come and go from this development is going to come and go out to M-59 as opposed to down to Commerce Road. So they're not going to be adding a whole lot of traffic to the unpaved portion of Maxfield Road. Now, the road commission may take a close look at that, and they may think otherwise, and at that point, they're going to be doing some more work with the applicant. But I expect that, other than the turn taper that they're proposing, that's going to be the extent of the road improvements that the road commission's going to require.
Okay, one other thing on here was the county could require a street light at the entrance?
It's a possibility, and again, that's their jurisdiction, their call, if it's deemed a traffic safety necessity. I have not talked to any of them directly to hear that that's something that they're going to pursue. More than happy to give you a card on the way out. It's something that I can specifically ask my contacts at the road commission if that's even in the realm of possibility, because I think you certainly have an interest in knowing that. It was just one of the many things I threw out there as possibilities for any new development that are in the realm of possible for road improvements. It's not to suggest that any or all of them are going to come to fruition, it's just one of the many things that the road commission is going to look at when they're reviewing a new private road off of their public road.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much. Anyone else?
David, let me ask you a question. Is there, do you know if there's a street light at Maxfield Lake Road in Courtney Court?
I... I don't, and there might be someone in the audience that may...
Somebody's nodding their head, "No."
No?
Okay.
And that's the answer, that's the answer to Forrest Brook, yes?
(inaudible)
Come, why don't you give us your name and name...
(inaudible) 1266 Maxfield. You know, when this body approved the development at Forrest Brook, and it's a fine development, I don't have any real complaints about the development, except that in the actual construction stages, nobody from the township ever went back out to measure or take elevations to make sure that the developer followed the elevations that were in the plan. And it turned out that the developer did not follow those elevations and flooded my driveway along with my neighbor, Bill Poland, and we ended up in litigation. And, you know, I just don't want more water on a property. That's all I, that's all. I'm happy to hear that there's not going to be any street lighting because I really enjoy night time. And I just want to make sure that someone's going to be accountable here at the township level to make sure that they do what they say they're going to do. I'm sure they're fine, upstanding developers, but we all know how it goes. You cut a corner here, you cut a corner there, this pile of dirt gets moved here instead of over there. And I just want to make sure that whatever is approved, that the township takes an interest in making sure that that's what's developed there. Because I will make noise if I end up with a lot more water on our property. I love my property, I just don't want any more water.
So if I may, I can speak to that quickly and do what I can to reassure. So part of the review of this preliminary plan was by our township engineer. Their preliminary review is nowhere near the level of detail that they will do for a review if and when this gets to construction, construction plans. Then, once they're actually moving dirt around, per our requirements, our engineer will be on site doing things like checking elevations and checking the road construction with the intent, or with the goal, the obligation to...
Obligation is the key.
Okay.
What I want...
To ensure that what this planning commission and our township board may approve is what gets built. That is their job, and they're good at it.
Yeah. I'm really happy about the way...
All right, good deal. Anyone else this evening? Sure, please. Get your name again.
Al, Lee Stouse. I go by my middle name, so I'm Lee Allen Stouse, but...
All right.
656 Maxfield Road. The idea of an easement across their property, I think, would solve a lot of, calm a lot of fears of at least three property owners concerned about. The other thing is, this is kind of a, it's not their problem, but it'd be a joint problem. All the creeks that come out of that whole area where we're talking on Lone Tree comes and it goes under Maxfield Road through a cul-de-sac that's probably four foot in diameter. And as it goes across to the west and turns on this person's property, there are about four downed trees. So that creek does not really drain. Right now, it's running as high as about a third of that by, in the spring, or when we have a really big downpour, it'll fill up to about a half, half of that, as it goes under the road. I went to the road commissioner, and he says, "You know, we didn't put that in, we didn't do the creeks, it's all your problem." And I says, "Okay, what are we going to do?" And he says, "It's not my problem." But unless those trees, whoever approaches that landowner, cleans up that trees, for this development to tie into those creeks, it's going to add a lot more water, and it could flood on the other side because the property is a little lower. So somewhere along the line, and since the road commissioner doesn't want anything to do with it, I hope that we can get maybe the township to approach that landowner, explain some of the problem. I don't know if you'd like to know there's more water maybe coming through there, but it has to be opened up for proper drainage. So it's not his problem, it'll be our problem, and hopefully the township can get involved and help because I thought the road commissioner would do it. So he tried to tell me they didn't put that cul-de-sac in, they didn't dig those ditches, and everybody around there that's been there for 20 years or so says the county did it, but they won't claim them now. So we're stuck. I just wanted you to be aware of that.
Okay.
Sir, Mr. Stouse, if you want to get in touch with me, you know, Monday, for example, I probably want some more detail on where we're talking and...
I can show it to you.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know necessarily this evening, but...
It's the property owner who may object to us sending more water through his property.
Yeah, I just, when you were talking to the downed trees and the four-foot culvert and everything else, I would just need your help knowing exactly where that is and if that's...
Right ahead. Lone Tree.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, well, thank you.
That would be a good idea.
Anyone else this evening?
You can leave yourself.
Need your name again.
Hi, Chris Peterson.
Okay.
00 Lone Tree Road, just to the east of the development. I guess everything I heard was good news. I appreciate it. First time I've come to one of these meetings. Appreciate the developers' due diligence in explaining their plans and also their willingness to provide easement. I guess my own questions are in particular to the easement process and exactly what that easement would be for, if it's for all the public, if it's for just the private landowners that are along that stretch of Lone Tree Road. The portion of Lone Tree Road, as it's shown on the developers' plans, actually does run, per the survey, pretty much completely on their property. Once it gets further to the east, it starts becoming split between northern properties and southern properties, which happens to be the case on my property and the property to the north of me, where our property lines kind of meet in the middle of the road. Anyway, just looking out for myself and my neighbors for access of our properties and to try to understand what that easement process is. I don't know if you need to explain that to me today or not, but...
Dave, is that something that you've been dealing with him during the week or tonight?
Well, sure, and I think Trustee Clany and I may need to compare notes on what we know about Lone Tree Road, because it sounds like what I'm hearing from the road commission might be different than what his research has shown. There's certainly an opportunity as part of this development to, at least on their, between their east and west property lines, and when I say they, I mean the applicant, this is an opportunity to at least answer a lot of these questions for that section of Lone Tree Road. As far as getting the access easement, I don't think they're opposed to that. I think they've spoken tonight about their willingness to do that. That's something that would get recorded as perhaps as a condition of final site condominium approval. It could perhaps be written in the master deed for the whole development as well. I mean, I think there's different legal methods for getting that recorded, but I think it's the intent of planning department, planning commission, township board, and I think the applicant to get that cleaned up. Lone Tree Road is something that has a lot more questions than answers, and I think this is an opportunity to answer some of them, at least on this property.
I guess it also brings up the fact that, I mean, due to me owning a portion of the current, you know, road that's there, liability-wise, and also for the service of my neighbors, I would like to also provide an easement to those that are beyond me and those who use the road now as well.
Okay.
Not only do I not want problems around liability if there's to be an incident on that portion of my property in which my neighbors are using, I just also want to be a kind neighbor and offer it to them as well, so...
Here's what I suggest, because I think we're not getting, it depends on who you talk to over at the road commission. I mean, there's a difference between vacating a road. When they formally vacate a county road, there's a process under the statutes for how that goes back to the property owners, okay? It's my understanding, and the way it works is that all the section corners or section lines in a township are all considered dedicated public rights of way. Lone Tree is a section line, the engineer that was here might, I'm correcting that, it's a section line. As a section line, if you look at, you know, the township is 36, it's six miles square, it's six by six.
I understand the section lines, yeah.
And it's a section line, and as a section line, it's a public right of way. As a public right of way, that's where, you know, the township, or when the county was developed, those lines were all drawn, and those were supposed to be dedicated, and they're dedicated public rights of way. That's why there's been a lot, if you look, what should have happened there is that should be a road that they maintain. Now, from what I understand is parts of that particular part of Lone Tree, they decertify it. And what that means is it's a special type of designation because what it does is it takes it off the role of what is maintained by the township, by the county through their, the funding that they receive through Act 51. Which, the whole idea behind that is, okay, we're not, we're just not going to maintain it.
Right.
But technically, I don't think it absolves them of their responsibility in terms of being a public right of way. Meaning, they may not maintain it, but it's still a public right of way. I don't think, unless that can...
And there is still utility, overhead utility.
And that's a, exactly, and the utility, the utility would not be there but for the fact that it's a public right of way.
Right.
So I think it may be belts and suspenders. I agree, I think, just to be on the safe side, when the developer comes through with the site plan, we probably should have as part of that an easement dedicating access to the certain lots that are back there. And if we could do that, and he's willing to do that, it's probably, like I said, belts and suspenders. And in terms of what your neighbors are all, there's different ways you interpret an an easement. An easement can be by necessity, and therefore you all have access to that road because it's the only way in there. There's no, I know there's no access on the west side.
That is the case, yeah.
Right, so...
It's much less improved.
You have an easement, yeah, nobody can block your easement. And then there was, somebody talked about the same thing about the drainage. That's, there's also a certain amount of natural drainage, you can't block the natural drainage. And so approaching that property owner to allow for the proper drainage may be something we can look into too.
It's just due to natural deadfall, what Al was speaking of, and it's just across Maxfield Road. Here, hold on, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I live out that way too, so I know, I'm pretty familiar with what you're talking about.
It currently is not an issue. It does seem to, you know, potentially slow down the flow downstream on the west side of Maxfield Road. If you go to the south a bit, so the culvert, and I think it's a three-foot diameter, is right here, and there's just some natural deadfalls, and the creek starts to wind quite a bit right over here. So, and I think the developer is proposing a 15-inch pipe through this wetland into your retention basin and then across the road, kind of right by the bend of... And it's not really a natural, you know, flowing waterway. I don't...
It's just open wetland.
I mean, I'm no, I'm not a civil engineer, but I don't think it would, you know, put too much more water in there. But, you know, potentially if that landowner's pursued to clean it up, that would probably be a resolution to any concerns, so...
I know that Forrest Brook had some issues, that subdivision with the property owner adjacent to that area over there.
Thank you, guys.
All righty, thank you. Anyone else?
I don't know how many people understand the history of that road, the abandoned road. You know, we put a gate up last year because we were getting hunters all over the place, kids like Lover's Lane, and there are contractors who like to dump back there.
That's right.
Okay, so when we put the gate up, it stopped the dumping. Now it's keeping the kids out, although we get a lot of kids from sub up on top down in that whole area. If you leave anything in there like a deer blind or anything, you might as well forget it. Trailers have been destroyed in there, and one all the way in the back has been. So I just, you know, I hate to have to take that gate down because I think all that's going to start again. And that, what that really means is anybody dumping out on that road, and we take that gate down, it's going to turn back into a dump site. I'm just saying.
I'm not sure that anything proposed as part of this development includes taking the gate down.
(inaudible).
No, we don't want to take that gate down.
They don't. I think there was a question...
I thought there was two driveways...
There was, just a question up here, "Could you take lot 20 and 21 and dump them onto Lone Tree?" And they don't want that, and we're not, and we're not suggesting it.
This is okay.
Yeah, we're...
I know it was being discussed, and we were probably talking, and I wasn't listening.
That's all right.
I apologize, but, okay, gate stays up, that's great.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
No, it is an interesting topic, and it's probably not for this, but as a citizen, I have used, I've been in the area 20 years myself, and I'm, Pleasant Valley Road, a little bit south of Lone Tree. And before the gate was up, I had heard the same thing, that it was a public road. And we've walked it, we've ran it on foot, rode motorcycles. It's been years because my kids are growing up right now, but we used to pass through there also. So there should be a resolution on the road itself, and maybe this will be what drives that. And, you know, I can't imagine the trouble you have with hunters and people dumping their stuff there, which is terrible.
That's been taken care of. I think the biggest nuisance right now, and I think both you guys have agreed, kids all over bring their four-wheelers out there, and they're just tearing up anything that's grass.
Yeah.
He planted seed, cultivated his whole area back there, and they just come in and tore that all up. And anything that's, if you had a deer blind back there, they tear it up. But just, that's the story the kids are today. But, yeah, we've stopped that, and I was afraid that those two driveways would just create a whole new, whole new problem. Thank you very much.
All right. Anyone else? Okay, I would like to say thank you to everybody for coming this evening. We get a lot of good information from you guys that we wouldn't know otherwise, so thank you very much. Let's move on to the planners' report. Dave?
I might be talked out.
It's a first.
No. No, a lot of what I brought up in the planners' reports, and over the last few meetings, kind of came to fruition at this meeting tonight. I've been giving you updates of here are the things that are coming your way, and they... they all, I mentioned to Chair Fox, they all kind of dovetailed into this meeting. So it certainly was a long meeting, but I like to think very productive meeting. And for those reasons, I don't have anything new to add at this time.
All right. I got a space or something.
Or else what am I doing?
All right, we're moving on to committee reports. Were you truly done, Dave?
Yeah, it was truly done.
You were truly done?
I am now.
All right. No one to hurt your feelings, all right. Committee reports, anybody have anything?
I had a question on the belts and suspenders. What does that mean?
Redundant.
Redundant?
Yeah.
Was that the only one with a question, guys?